Welcome to the Millbrae City Council Meeting. Roll call, please. We're not on.
All council members are present.
Thank you. We apologize for the delay. We had a couple earlier meetings. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No ceremonial presentations. Agenda overview. Mr. Williams, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you, Vice Mayor and members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. I would like to briefly give you an update on activities that are happening within the city. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, May 23rd, we'll be hosting the Design It Yourself Native Plant Landscape Workshop at the Millbrae Library. Participants will talk and learn the principles of garden design, see an example of a design from start to finish, and create a landscape design of their own. The workshop is free to attend, and will start at 7:00 PM again at the Millbrae Library. To RSVP is (650) 349-3000 is the number. Again, that's area code (650) 349-3000. And also, as you may have seen, there was traffic enforcement last Friday conducted by the Sheriff's Department, and that was on last Friday, May 18th. And they stepped up their pedestrian safety enforcement and focused the enforcement to address the primary collision factors involving motorists and pedestrians, mostly at the intersection of El Camino Real and Millbrae Avenue. Pedestrian fatalities are rising in California as more people are using non-motorized means of transportation, and the Sheriff's Office mapped out locations over the past two years where pedestrians involved collisions where they have occurred along with violations that led to those crashes. So the Sheriff's Office personnel conducted saturation enforcement to address these collision factors. They deployed— The deployment resulted in 34 citations. So they issued 34 citations that day. One was failing to stop at a red light, one for unsafe passing, one for blocking a sidewalk, one for an unsafe turn, and 30 were all failures to yield to a pedestrian within a crosswalk. So good work by the Sheriff's Department. The Millbrae Community Center Design Concept Survey is underway. We thank everyone who has participated to support the creation of the design concepts out in the community for our new Millbrae Community Center. Over the past two weeks, dozens of people have weighed in with their opinions, but we need more people to share those opinions and ideas by taking the online survey that's available on the city's website. And then lastly, the Mills High School students shined with the award for the National Merit Scholarship. Last week, the Mercury News ran a story on California students who are being awarded with the National Merit Scholarship, and there were two Mills High School students, Catherine Chan and Hongzhu Zhao were among the awardees here locally. Every year, more than a million students compete for the scholarship, and it was awarded to students who possess outstanding academic record and have accomplished great things in and out of the classroom. So congratulations to those two students. Next, to review the agenda, after this presentation, there's public communication, followed by the consent calendar. Item five of the consent calendar is a resolution awarding construction contract to granite construction for the Old Bay Shore Highway and Rawlins Road repaving project in the amount of 1.3 million, and approving a professional service agreement with Bilekian Associates in the amount of $118,000, and authorizing the City Manager, my designated, to execute the subject contracts and contract change orders up to the project contingency amount of $197,000, and this is an action item. Item number six is the Community Center Rebuild Project Information Update. That's an informational item. Item number seven is the resolution electing to become subject to the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Procedures that are set forth in the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, directing the City Manager to notify the State Controller of this election that's through a resolution to be adopted. And then also waive the second reading of the ordinance and amend Chapter 2.20 of Title II of the Millbrae Municipal Code to update the purchasing system and provide bidding procedures under the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. And again, waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 2.20 of Title II of the Millbrae Municipal Code to update the purchasing system and provide bidding procedures under that act. So this is an action item, and there are three actions. Waive—the second reading, adopt the ordinance, and also adopt the resolution. Item number eight is to approve a waiver of fees totaling $575 for the Millbrae Historical Society, their annual barbecue event for July 4th, 2018. There are no public hearings this evening, so moving to existing business under item number nine is to review and consider an ordinance regulating short-term residential rentals. Under new business, item number 10, resolution approving a new maximum garbage rate schedule, which will become effective July 1st of 2018, in full accordance with the franchise agreement with South San Francisco Scavenger Company, and that is an action item. And lastly, item number 11 is the first budget review of the two-year operating budget and capital budget for fiscal years 2018-19 and fiscal years 2019-20, and that is an action item, but this would just be the first review of the budget, and final budget adoption would be scheduled for June 12th. So with that, Mayor, that concludes the manager's report this evening and agenda review.
Questions from the council? Yes, Ms. Schneider?
I would like to pull Agenda Item—
Your mic wasn't on. Could you repeat that?
Would like to pull Agenda Item Number Seven from Consent Calendar for a brief comment.
Okay. That being said, Mr. Williams, and with the permission of the Sheriff's Department, there was a video of the operations of the Sheriff's Department. Can we get that up on our website as well?
Yes, Mayor.
YouTube was very interesting, and thank you for not taking it out on all the drivers, but some pedestrians need to be more alert as well. So, thank you. We have one public communication. Wynne, please. Nice to see you.
Hi, my name is Wynne Gersich, and now that it's election time, this is a time we can get Jackie Spears out of office. If you all watched this video on YouTube, it says, "2017 Banded Documentary Tells the Truth About Water Exposed." This will show you what fluorosalonic acid is, and she wrote a bill in 1995 to fluoridate the rest of the state. Menlo Park and East Palo Alto got the poison in their water in 2005. So I've been going down there, and my boyfriend's going to Menlo Park hopefully tonight to tell the people not to vote for Jackie Spears, but I've asked the city councils to have a town hall meeting, show this video, and have Jackie Spears explain why she poisoned the drinking water for the rest of California. In 2014, I went up to Sonoma, and I met Paul Connet from Fluoride Action Network, which I have put the Harvard brain damage studies on fluoridation on public record in this city and many cities, even the school boards. And everybody seems to go, "Blah, blah, 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 blah." This is real. This stuff will kill you, and it also lowers your children's IQs, and it's got lead in it, and arsenic and cyanide. So arsenic, low doses of arsenic, causes cancer, and this is very important because this is your life, and it will sterilize you too. So if it doubles breast cancer death rates, I think Jackie Spears should—in my opinion, she belongs in jail. And when you watch this video, believe me, you will be angry, and she should not be reelected, and I hope that you tell people. But most of all, this is the one that's the killer. This right here is a 5G compilation. This has the guy from the California Tumor Registry talking about—he's talking about the 5G frequencies that they're putting in in these small cell towers all over. And this is probably the most important thing that you can see. This video right here will scare the heck out of you because this is murder. And he's going to talk about having over 300 scientists trying to stop this globally. Barry Trower is the man who was the microwave specialist, and his video is, "Dr. Barry Trower, 5Gs Will Devastate Humanity, But Those Behind It Are Above the Law." He is trying to go globally to get other countries. He's got 40 nations trying not to put these 5G frequencies in because they don't have to bomb you anymore. All they have to do is blast the frequencies. They can give you cancer. It's mind control. They can cause screaming in your head. They can do all kinds of stuff. They can actually make you hear, like you're—you know, like people that are schizophrenic and they hear voices? They can do that to you. This is scary. So any metal that you have on your body—if you've got wire-rimmed glasses and underwear bra, if you sleep on a bed that's got springs in it, and they have this near your house—they have this eight houses down from where I live. They put it right near the schools because it cooks the girl's ovaries and it sterilizes people. But this is the other one, too. 5G frequencies, 5G kill frequencies required in all cities, and more bad news. This is from Deborah Taveras. If you look up StopTheCrime.net, 5G kill frequencies required in all cities. This is part of the depopulation plan, and everybody needs to be aware of this, because if you're not, you better get on board, because this is something you should be protesting at the city councils and telling all your neighbors. But most of all, this was in the news today. Libby Shaft is going to have a bill that they're trying to push through that anybody who warns illegal immigrants about ICE coming will spend 5Gs in jail. So this is the title of the article. This was in the Daily Review. "Bill Focuses on Shaft."
Sorry, you're—
"Raid Warnings."
Thank you.
Please check it out.
Okay. Moving approval of the minutes. Sorry, I skipped ahead there. Okay, your comments, please.
On the minutes of February 13th, under public comment, there are three members of the public who commented, and their comments are fairly neutral. They don't really say what those people said. So I can't vote for those minutes as they stand, but I'm sure I'll be the one out of four. As to the minutes of May 8th, on page—
Did you—I'm sorry. I don't quite understand—
There were three people speaking about the vice mayor rotation. The comments in the minutes are fairly whitewashed. They basically said that these people spoke about the vice mayor rotation. They didn't say what they said. To me, what that means is anybody in the future going back to look at past minutes will actually have to go to the videotape to see what the public actually said. So I understand the desire to have minimalist minutes, but not to the point where they so simplify the information or what people have said that it doesn't really reflect what was really said. And in that case—and I don't know about any other minutes that had to do with that particular item—I don't know if those also have been so simplified as to be meaningless. Okay, and on May 8th, on page 10, where it says, "I reported that there was a dead body next door," it was actually left there for weeks. It was several weeks that the dead body was left at a house operating as an Airbnb, so I'd like that corrected. Page 10, number—page four, number 10. So just to correct that minute on there. Thank you.
Mr. Lee?
On May 8th, under Agenda Overview, where it says, "Vice Mayor Wayne Lee announced the item 10," could you change that to "Request, Announced to Request"? Thank you.
With the changes to—why don't we take these separately? February 13th, I've made a motion to approve the minutes. Ms. Aliva has seconded.
The minutes for February 13th passed with a vote of four to one, with Councilmember Schneider opposing. Oh, I'm sorry. The minutes for February 13th passed with a vote of four to one, with Councilmember Schneider opposing.
Okay, minutes of May 8th with the addition of Ms. Schneider's—mine's on. With the addition of Ms. Schneider's comment, do we have a motion? We do have a motion. Your votes, please.
The minutes for May 8th passed unanimously.
Thank you. And we have the consent item. Item seven's been pulled. We have items five, six, and eight. Vice Mayor Lee has made the motion. Seconded by Mr. Oliver. Your votes, please. So which item was pulled?
Item seven.
So the items five, six, and eight on the consent calendar passed unanimously.
Okay, can we—a briefing on seven? Item seven. Did you have a specific comment?
I do. When we talked about the construction contract format, we talked about American-based manufacturing for products that would be used for those projects, and it's not—in the minutes from that council meeting, it says that federal projects require the use of American-made products. I'd like to see that in—that all of our bid documents include a preference for American-made products as well as—and I won't use the correct terminology, Mr. Williams, if you can help me with that—women and minority-owned business, local business preferences that apparently can be built into RFPs for local contract work so that we try to keep jobs locally. So it wasn't—it couldn't go in the minutes, and would just like to see this come back to us as a future—if we're going through all of our purchasing agreements and all of our RFP agreements, that we consider local-based and American-based products. Thank you.
So that said, why don't we have some standard language proposed for future contracts? Well, if there's any disadvantaged DB—
I would just note that jurisdictions that have those programs have a significant ordinance with an entire program, so I think it's a—maybe a council goal issue in terms of, is that something you want to pursue? I would also note that American steel requirements are incredibly complicated. We spend a lot of time assisting clients in how to address those, so I think that's something worth careful consideration. It's not—it's not an easy thing to accomplish.
Well, and I think the suggested recommendation was for a preference.
Yeah.
So I don't find any problems with preferences related to American-made, if it gets into further detail, which we might want to look at in the future. Yes, Ms. Aliva?
When we use the word preference, do we hold ourselves liable for anything?
Well, I think any—anytime you add another element to a bidding context, you raise the—you raise the issue of it resulting in a challenge or a protest. Again, there are quite well-developed procedures for how to give bid preferences. Veterans get bid preferences. Some are well-crafted, others are not. In the transit field, there's a 10-point preference for people who retain the employees of the prior contractor. Where are those 10 points? Where the legislature thought those 10 points were going to go into a calculation of how to—it's—it's completely unsolved. So I think we can look at that and maybe get back and give you some advice in terms of how such a preference could be employed and whether other cities do it. I'm just saying, it's not so easy, and it may be more effort than you want to undertake.
I'd like to make a motion to approve— Ms. Aliva has made the motion. Mr. Oliver, seconds. Your votes, please.
Item seven on the consent calendar passed unanimously.
No public hearings. Moving on to existing business. You have item nine, reviewing consideration of an ordinance regulating short-term residential rentals. We do have some speaker slips on that. I think we would be best suited by a briefing on this before we begin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Mr. Tom Madalena, who is our Deputy Director in the Planning Department, to provide a presentation this evening.
Thank you, Chair Papin, and member of the council. I'm here tonight to present on the—our draft Short-Term Residential Rental Ordinance for the city of Millbrae. Tonight, as Tom mentioned, we'd like to bring this before you as a result—actually of a direction that was given to staff as a result of the May 8th council meeting, in which we heard from stakeholders that included law enforcement, Airbnb, and members of our community, and renters of these short-term rentals. And so as a result, the city attorney's office helped us, and they crafted a draft ordinance for us that was put before you with the staff report. And so— Talk about overall the need and sort of the purpose of the short-term residential rental ordinance itself. Currently, there—these residential residential rentals, short-term residential rentals, are banned within the city of Millbrae in the R1 and R2 districts, and we have—we believe, according to Airbnb, that we have approximately up to 200-plus of these operating illegally within the city currently. And so therefore, we need—
Is that just Airbnb, or is that other companies?
My understanding is that was just an estimate from Airbnb from one online hosting platform. And so therefore, it's determined that we really need to address the advent of these short-term residential ordinances within the city of Millbrae. And given the lack of available information that we have on these units and the appropriate and the lack of appropriate policy in place, enforcement has hereby been hampered and could benefit from policy that's designed to best address this emerging shift in land use. And the ordinance itself was addressed—or designed to address—the community concerns which can provide for improved mechanisms for both law enforcement and the city of Millbrae, which are needed while allowing the use to exist and operate properly within the city. And so the goals of the ordinance itself—it's kind of a complex issue in the sense of we're trying to craft an ordinance that regulates a use that doesn't maybe fit well within the areas in which it's existing or would maybe be allowed to exist. And so therefore, we're trying to address a complex issue that's created by these emerging markets in the context of fit within our local land use policy as well as enforcement. And so therefore, we propose to institute a permitting process within the Planning Division of Community Development that would allow for the city to obtain essentially the necessary information on these short-term rentals as well as their operators. This would establish also operating rules for the short-term residential rentals that will preserve—or would help to preserve—the residential character of neighborhoods. Later on, we'll talk about hosted or non-hosted and caps that are placed upon what are called non-hosted units, which in theory would help to preserve housing stock both on the long-term rental basis as well as to preserve the potential for people to have homeownership, because these are short-term residential rentals or classified as 30 days or less. And then also, we wanted to establish operating rules for short-term residential rentals—sorry, I said that already. It will also create an avenue to collect transient occupancy tax revenue streams on the same level as traditional sources, such that we receive from hotels or motels or other commercial lodging located within the city. And we believe that it will provide additional tools to our police officers and code enforcement officers in case of disturbances, and it also should help mitigate the impacts on housing stock for homeowners and long-term renters. That was the preserving—I mentioned earlier. These short-term residential rentals would be allowed as an accessory use in our residential districts. However, these units—just to confirm, though, these units will be required to be in compliance with all the rules and regulations, and so should we go out there and do an inspection or see that something else isn't up to code, I think that would be a time that which we would address that appropriately. Only single-family homes, units in duplexes, triplexes, or multifamily dwellings and accessory dwelling units may be rented either whole or in part. And there's no rental of non-residential structures. So even though it's allowed in our commercial district, it must be a residential—for—it must be for residential habitation. And the short-term residential rental units must be the primary residence of the lessors, and the number of the nights is capped for the non-hosted at 100. And that's also designed such that—the theory behind that is, is that it doesn't provide for, let's say, the benefit if somebody wanted to invest in the city of Millbrae, purchase a home, and then only utilize it on a short-term residential rental basis. So it tries to preclude that. About the—little bit about the permitting process that we hope to implement. Permits will be required. It would be called the Short-Term Residential Rental Permit. We also would require a business license, and it would also require a transient occupancy tax registration certificate, so we can work on the receipt of those TOTs. And then also, the applicants for non-hosted rentals must provide two authorized agents who have the authority to manage the property. The goal behind this is to assist law enforcement in case of where we have a nuisance or disturbance that occurs, that there's more than one person that could be on site. I believe within one hour is the way it's crafted, such that we can deal with that appropriately during the evening hours. And the Short-Term Residential Rental Permit has—it can be revoked where the use is detrimental to either public health, safety, or the welfare of our community for repeated violations of the operational rules or failure to pay the taxes on the unit. We want to create also a Short-Term Residential Rental Registry. We would create that to maintain a citywide registry of all the short-term residential rentals, their current authorized representatives, and contact information, again, for law enforcement as well as our code enforcement. It would also, though, be available to the public. And with that, as far as the noticing mechanism, what we propose is that upon approval of the business license and the permit, then our Community Development Department would be required to set out a mailer or a notification to all property owners within 500 feet of that residential unit, essentially notifying them of the permit that this is now going to exist, contact—it would give them a lot of the pertinent information that—who to contact for law enforcement in case of a disturbance, information of that nature. To talk about some of the operational rules for the units, it distinguishes between hosted, somebody that's there on-site, living there in their own premise or running out, versus a non-hosted unit, which doesn't—would not have that situation. The nighttime occupancy hours would be limited to two persons per bedroom plus two people, and then the daytime occupancy would be twice that. And parking is a challenge. The way that we propose parking with this policy is that no additional parking would be required. However, the number—the number of vehicles for either the renters or their guests would be required to be accommodated on-site. So they would have to have existing on-site parking in order to accommodate the number of vehicles that would come to utilize the unit, and those existing on-site must be made available to their guests or their renters. That makes sense? I can go back to that with questions if necessary. And so we also—with this—this is only in relation to a residential short-term rental that weddings, corporate events, commercial functions, or any other similar type of event which has the potential really to cause either traffic, parking, or some other noise or nuisance would basically—would not be allowed. It's prohibited from occurring as part of a short-term residential rental. One of the benefits is, is that there would be the potential for the city to receive—that would provide an avenue for us to receive transient occupancy tax, and it would allow us to collect that TOT for this—for this use that is currently existing and is operating within our city and impacting the city, quite frankly. The revenue that we sort of ballpark estimate this—you know, there's a number of different numbers that we have seen or used, let's say, as far as like a rack rate or the rate for a room per night, which is how we came up with this estimation, but revenues estimated have the potential to provide upwards of $600,000 annually for the city. And we would have these increased reporting requirements for hotel operators, including short-term rental operators. And these—we believe that these additional revenues, these revenues generated, could provide us the opportunity to hire additional code enforcement officer staff that could improve on the overall health and safety of the community itself. And then now to the code enforcement and policing side. We believe that this will give the tools and mechanisms to provide the potential to better regulate with additional staff resources. That's through the money that would be provided from the TOT. The ordinance will provide the policy for code enforcement and those additional tools for law enforcement when a disturbances or some other issue is brought to our attention. It allows us for a better understanding of where these are located within the city. So right now, we—you know, we can hear about a caller, understand that you may know where they are, you may not. We have a better idea with an actual list of where they're located so that we can react more quickly, which also puts our law enforcement in a better position. The authorized agents would be required to respond within 60 minutes, I believe, of the property, and they would also be required to allow officers access into the unit when the officer suspects that there's some type of illegal or illicit activity going on. And the last part is that the lessors would be strictly liable for violations of the operating restrictions by their guests, and there are penalties, there are fairly reasonably strict penalties that are imposed, I believe, at $1,000 per day for an ongoing infraction. And with that being said, comments and questions are welcome. Thank you.
Mayor, may I? I'd like to introduce Jared Yan. He's an attorney with Hanson Bridget. He's done the lion's share of the preparation of the ordinance and also the other attachments that are part of the staff report and the ordinance, the waivers, the short-term rental application draft. So— So Jared is here to answer specific questions regarding the ordinance and legal aspects and enforcing aspects as well. So welcome, Jared.
Thank you, Jared. Do you have anything to add at this point?
No, but I'm happy to take any questions.
I think some clarifying questions would be helpful here. I am assuming that city staff is not capable of either tracking or enforcing this at this point in time. There was some mention of a contracting with a company. We thank Airbnb for working with us here, but there are a lot of other companies out there that also need to be held to a standard. Should we come to an agreement tonight? I don't know. But what information do we have on tracking enforcement and all of that, should we go down this path?
Well, I think that that's something that we would sort of develop and learn as time goes on. Currently, we don't have those mechanisms in place within the city, as you know. I think you first kind of alluded to staffing. And you know, we do have a bit of a concern with that, given that we know that with one, there's potentially 200. With one hosting platform, we're talking about requiring permitting of all of these type of units. And so we've tried to cautiously approach the development of the policy to, at least currently, take that into consideration. And then your other part of your question was, I might have missed, you know?
Well, enforcement and tracking of these various companies is exceptionally important. We could have an ordinance that means absolutely nothing if we're not able to enforce it or track these businesses. So this is a concern of mine.
Tom, if I may. So Deanna Hillibrance, who is our deputy city manager and finance director, has been reaching out to several firms and doing some due diligence on that. So we are gathering some information. Muti Financial is one firm, and there are two other companies that are on our radar that we are reaching out to and meeting with. So in terms of tracking database, which is different than our code enforcement aspects of it, we are working also collection management of the TOT revenue and auditing. So we are doing our due diligence on those firms.
Well, I mean, we want to be serious about this. Public safety is first and foremost, and you've included that in here. But again, it means nothing unless we can take action regarding the whole picture, regarding all the companies and everything that's out there. So how long would it take to actually implement an ordinance and make it worth something as far as ensuring our public safety?
So the process is, we'll need to, you know, after tonight, if we get your direction, we'll work with legal counsel, make the change of the ordinance. We do then have to go to the planning commission, have a planning commission hearing, and then to the city council. So during that time concurrently, during that period, we will bring to you a management plan, enforcement plan, along with the ordinance.
To build on what Tom was adding there, is that tonight, we were really looking for direction. So we're sort of bringing this forward as a process prior to going to planning commission, which will be our normal route, looking for more direction from council prior to sort of refining it, getting it to planning commission before it comes back to you.
I'm sure you're going to get a lot of direction. And I thank you. This is a huge step in the right direction. So thank you very much for that. Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes, thank you. Can we, the mayor had a really good comment. And is there a way that we can require to any platform that provides opportunities for short-term rentals to register or be permitted in the city, so we know who's here?
Permitting?
So Airbnb would have a business license?
Yeah. That's right.
So I think that there are a couple of components to this. I think that, I've chatted with a couple of city attorneys from around the state who have also been dealing with these kinds of issues. I think that typically, the online platforms are fairly willing to sign voluntary collection agreements by which they would help the city to collect transient occupancy tax when somebody is paying for their room on Airbnb. Airbnb would add a $5 fee, or whatever the tax is, and then forward that to the city. The companies are typically much less willing to do things like share information on where that money is coming from, which units are being rented, how frequently units are being rented, whether the units are rented, or share information about whether the units are rented have city permits. This is, I guess, a point of contention right now between cities across the country, really, but especially in California, and companies like Airbnb, and it's the subject of some ongoing litigation. I think, I believe the city of Santa Monica currently has a case before the Ninth Circuit challenging, or I suppose Airbnb has a case in front of the Ninth Circuit challenging the city of Santa Monica's ability to require them to provide information and to cooperate with the enforcement actions. And so we should have more guidance on our ability to compel information and request information within the next year or so. But this is very much a dynamic field where the law is still in flux.
Okay, so my question is, can we require online these type of platforms to get a business license or register with the city? Because they are doing business in the city.
I believe that they are...
I'm not talking about the host, I'm talking about the platform, Airbnb, or V, was it VBOR?
I believe that there are some cities that have required them to get TOT certificates and things like that. Getting more information from them than just a business license is more difficult.
Okay, well, I think that's a good step, so we know what we're dealing with. I know there are companies who, some cities, hire to track, you know, who's renting, who's not, right? The other thing is, I'd like to see if we could, anyway, so I'm moving on to the other part, which is, we haven't really addressed, is the, you know, the hosts can do only so much, but if somebody wants to come in the city and cause trouble, you know, they can, obviously, they can get by, they can get through whatever system that's meant to screen them. And this is what probably happened in this Airbnb issue. So I'd like to see that there's some sort of incentive for people who rent will, you know, have a little bit more respect for property and neighboring properties. So maybe, two things. One, that these online short-term rental platforms require that before they can sign on as a host, that they show that they have, they've already applied for a permit with the city. I don't think that's, you know, so we require, anyway, we require them to get a permit, right?
Right.
The host. So that before they can even be a host on their platform, they need to demonstrate that they've gotten a permit.
Timing, I guess, is the question.
So I believe that the ordinance does do that in the sense that in order to host a short-term, to be a host on a short-term, or to rent your unit out as a short-term rental, you need to get a short-term rental permit from the city.
But that's incumbent on the host, not on the platform. So we want that platform, before they're allowed, somebody on their platform, that the person who's using their platform shows that they have obtained a permit, before they're allowed to use the platform.
The renter would obtain a permit?
Yes, not the renter, the host.
He's saying that the host. I'm not sure that you can do that timing-wise, because the residents would have to approach the host company. I mean, you're kind of asking for the reverse. You're asking almost the hosts to go out and solicit the residents.
No, 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 that's not what I meant.
Well, if I'm a host, or not a host, I'm sorry, if I'm the operator on the internet, I don't know anything about Millbrae till somebody comes to me and wants to work through my service. So they would already have to have had the licenses and stuff. It's almost in reverse.
Well, then you want to verify, because when you sign on to any of these things, anyway, you have to do certain things to show, you have to have a credit card, you show, you know, you have to show, provide information, right? So why can't we say, you also have to provide this information, which is that you've registered and you got a permit with the city?
Well, I think that's what Airbnb had suggested to us. If we work through an ordinance, and we have an established ordinance, then anyone who wishes to be a host within the city of Millbrae, it would pop up automatically. In order for you to rent here, you would need the three things, and you would also be paying the TOT.
Well, I want it codified, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to do with the ordinance.
I didn't see that.
You want, go ahead, I got one more thing. The other thing, too, I'd like to see that if somebody's renting their place without a host, or not somebody, the host not on-site, that they, that the online platforms require some sort of substantial deposit, 2,500 or $5,000, you know, that they need to, that we require that they put that deposit down.
I think Tom has a response for that.
If I'm understanding you correctly, we do require a deposit of $1,000, I believe, for the city to recoup costs, but maybe we have to take, for speaking of our cost, that is.
That's for the city. I'd like to see that for, you know, just a larger amount.
For the homeowner, for the...
The renter, the renter, the person that's renting.
The renter provides to the...
Mr. Lee, I do believe that depending on the operator that you're working through, in other words, Airbnb has an enormous insurance policy. Now, should someone work through another operator which does not have an insurance policy, that would be...
But that's after the fact. What this purpose of this deposit would be is to incentivize people from not causing property damage. So if I knew I was going to lose my deposit, just like you're renting, someone rents from me, I require, they give me, you know, first and last round, and whatever, there's a deposit. So if they mess up my place, then I can use that deposit and take that deposit from them. And I think we can use it in the same way, that if somebody wants to rent a unit, that they need to put a significant deposit, so then to deter them from damaging that property.
Legal counsel?
Just one global comment. I think the more we try to specify to the platforms exactly how they do their business, the more likely we're going to get pushback. So I think the ideas are great. I think we would need to look at them carefully, because as we've seen, they've litigated things that I think seem fairly reasonable to us. I would note that Airbnb does have a substantial fund to pay the homeowner, the host, if there is damage, but I know that's not exactly what you're...
No, because that's after the fact. Yeah, okay, you go and damage, and you shoot up the neighborhood, and we'll give you, you know, no problem, we'll give you $1,000 to fix the house, you know, $10,000. That's after the fact.
Would you want to pay thousands of dollars to...
Well, I had to put a deposit down if I'm renting a place.
But for one night?
Yeah, for one night.
For a hotel room?
I'm not sure if that's reasonable.
Thousands of dollars in a deposit?
Well, they have security at hotels.
That's true.
Again, that's, I think, included in the part of the rental. Mr. Holliburton, and then Ms. Schneider? I'm sorry, did you have something?
I did. I have a question about what, I don't think I saw anything in here about what would result in a denial of a permit application. You know, I see there are a number of items that the host would have to agree with, but it almost sort of assumes that if you apply for a permit, you're going to get it. Can you speak to that?
I think we envision, let's say, if they're up to code, if there were issues with their property as far as not being up to their current enforcement, as far as our code is concerned. And the other, I'd have to think more clearly, Tom, do you have any other examples right now, what we're considering on that?
Well, yeah, I think a couple of things that, you know, anybody that would sign up for the program, we would have a building inspection, we'd have fire inspection, we would look at, you know, do they have anything that has been constructed without a building permit? And we would not issue a permit until those issues were brought up to code and resolved. And then also, if somebody has a two-bedroom unit, but they're requesting occupancy of 10, obviously, that would be denial. Planning would look at the issue of parking and use their discretion to see if the amount of occupants that the permit would be approved for versus the parking surrounding neighborhood. We do have a noticing requirement of 500 feet from the property line of all adjacent, or not even adjacent, within 500 feet. So it would be an administrative permit, almost like a planning director hearing-type process. So there are certain things that we would find that could deny the permit. But actually, I've just thought about that. So if it is denial, is there an appeal process?
Yes, there is.
So under our existing code.
So there's also, this is section 7.30.050. The second paragraph outlines the criteria for granting an application. It also notes in the third paragraph that the director has some discretion to impose conditions if, for whatever reason, a particular property looks like it might need, or there are special considerations for particular properties. And we can also revoke permits if they're detrimental to the welfare of the community or impose extra conditions.
Okay. Then one other, just brief comment on the occupancy limitations. First, I'm glad that that's in there. I think we should also consider studio units, or, you know, an in-law, something like that. May not necessarily have a legal bedroom, but I don't think that would be, I would imagine a studio would be treated like a one-bedroom. Is that correct?
That's how I would approach it, yes.
Maybe we should just include that.
Clarify that, correct.
Ms. Schneider, who's next?
I'm just going to leave it with the head.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Go right ahead, please.
As always, I'm going to help out, so go ahead.
Well, I have a couple nitpicking, if I can look at the ordinance.
Oh, go ahead, nitpick.
I wanted to know, that number 200, is that per year? Is that per...
100, I thought.
200?
Given that I was, my understanding was an estimate, I don't know the, I would say as a stamp in time, probably, is probably the way I would believe it, that was told to us, is that currently existing is 200, versus, let's say, over the time of a year, where they come and go?
If I may, a little more clarification. As we understand it, so 200 units are registered with Airbnb, of which an average of 100 nights per unit is what the estimate is. So that would be 20,000 room nights annually.
Hey, I went on the, that's hard to believe, just because I went on the app, I'm sure everybody else up here did, too, and there's not that many that are available. I have a question with regards to the on-site parking spaces. And how are we going to be able to regulate a city street if there's more cars on it? I mean, how does this help offsites? It's just, I mean, this is where I'm going with the mayor's comment on, we can write all this stuff down, but how are we going to enforce it?
Those are great questions.
That part really is bothersome. And then I probably have a question for Jared, our attorney here. What, how do you define, how do you define, hold on one second, primary resident? What does primary resident mean in this case?
So there's a definition in the ordinance, and that is, I don't want to misquote it.
Page four?
Yes. I might have printed an old copy.
Yeah, it's page...
Yeah, so it's a dwelling unit where the person is domicile, which is a legal term. It basically means your permanent residence, where you intend to return, and where they reside for at least 265 nights per year.
So when you read the short-term rentals as primary residence, this could be a tenant?
Yes.
Okay, so the tenants, the tenants could, we're imposing additional rules to tenants that already signed a lease that this is already enforced. If they have a California lease, you can't have a guest for over 10 days.
So if, so first, the tenant, in order to obtain a short-term rental permit, would need the permission of the owner of the property. And we've prepared a form, I believe it's in the application.
I think that should be clarified a little bit there, for primary residents, to make sure that, you know, that the tenancy agreement with their landlord surprecedes this.
Okay, I think it's their co-rerequirements. I believe one of the requirements in the application is the, is proof of consent for the property owner.
It's at the bottom of page four.
It would have to be permitted. Yes, so that is...
Number three.
And again, the fiscal impact on the, on your report, the staff's report, that is still, having a hard time with that, 4,000 per year with annual revenue with 600, and I know I talked to the city attorney this morning, but we don't even know who's going to enforce this, so how do we know what it's going to cost us to do it? It's... It's...
I would answer that, those are estimates. I agree with you. We're, we're taking a stab at trying to get a handle on how much potential revenue that there could be. I think that some of those costs were anticipated with additional code enforcement resources that would be needed in order to monitor and force policies such as this. And to give an idea of the 600,000, I think Tom had mentioned the 20,000, you know, room nights utilizing a calculation ratio of that times, I believe, a $250 a night assumption, and then I believe a 12% TOT tax rate would give us approximately in the neighborhood of 600,000. If we were to go, let's say, with a lower number, I believe we did either 200 or 187, I can't recall which one was utilized, it'd be more in the neighborhood, like 440,000 a year. So these are estimates that we're approximating based upon information that is, we're gathering from those that may not be such forthcoming as we've heard with information, but we're trying to get, get the best approximation that we can, given the tools and resource we have.
So I have two concerns. The first concern is this came out of a tragedy, this came out of a trauma. Paul, I'm really sorry for what happened on you and your neighbors there. And the intent for me to put an ordinance in place or to, to vote for an ordinance would be to, to display some sort of grounds for public safety. Now, if we gain some good out of it, the TOT, that's great, but, you know, if something good comes out of the bad. I'm not so sure that this is going to satisfy anything with regards to public safety. I mean, it's great for the revenue, if in fact there's revenue, I mean, that needs to be deepened, but I, I just feel like this could almost hurt the situation because if we infringe on Airbnb that wants to work with us and wants to make sure that they've put their safety factors into place, people are going to go away from the establishment of platforms and do it on their own, or do it sneakily, or do it around, you know, Craigslist or whatever it is. And that's a concern for me. I would rather focus more on the, the safety factor of it than the TOT. That's great if it comes with it, I'm all for generating income revenues for the city, but I'd like to see, Jared, if we could get something that would, would be more like the rules if you have an Airbnb or a short-term rental as a neighbor. You know, how, how can the neighbors have a resource to go out there instead of us going after these people that are following the platform? How could the neighbors have a resource or a hotline or something where that then the city could kind of, you know, look at something like that?
I, I think that, that kind of goes to Gina's first question of the night, if I'm not mistaken, that it, it's intended as a step to help us and to help law enforcement, to help kind of regulate what's existing without the tools in place to do it. So we would then get the registry, we would then get the names of those that are hosting, have contacts for law enforcement to get ahold of. And so it perhaps could be perceived as moving in the direction of better regulating it and, and starting to craft the tools that we know at least might start to work, and over time, we might have to refine.
And I think those 200 people are going to be here today, gone tomorrow, but the best source of disclosure is your neighbor. So if we could have some sort of hotline or outreach for them, a platform for them other than just having to have wordsmithing these ordinance and such, I think that that would, we could do both, we can, we can move towards the, the TOT and that kind of stuff. But if there is some sort of way that we could put into place a follow-through or a follow-up on a complaint because of an Airbnb or a short-term rental, I don't want to harp on Airbnb because I'm very grateful for them, you know, helping us through this.
And I think that, I had mentioned earlier, and Tom also touched on it as well, is the, the community development department will be doing that noticing. So we would be creating a list of the 500 neighbors and notifying them, and it would give some of that information you're speaking of. I don't think that we, we talked about exactly a hotline, but it would give the, the numbers for law enforcement, it would give them sort of contact information, number one, to maybe resolve it with their neighbor or move to the next step, which to, to sort of rise it up to another level.
Yeah, it has to be something that they can feel comfortable with reaching out to.
Yeah.
If I may, I think there's two elements of enforcement. One is criminal enforcement and the other is nuisance enforcement. And so we're trying to craft an ordinance that, that would take care of both of those and having the revenue stream that would fund what, what we believe would, we know the cost of two code enforcement officers. You make a good point, we need to really verify that income to make sure that it would satisfy that. But, so we're really looking at nuisance as well as then working with the sheriff's office for, for criminal aspects of it.
Yes, and, and we coordinated with the sheriff's office as we were drafting the ordinance, and they said that the most useful thing to them would be emergency contacts for, for if a disturbance arose. And we've included a requirement that there be two contacts who are available at all times, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, whenever the unit is rented, such that if the city were to call that contact, the, the contact would have to be onsite within one hour to resolve any disturbances. Those numbers, the, the numbers for those contacts would be publicly available to all neighbors. So the, so if, if there's a disturbance at a short-term rental down the block, that you can go on to the city's website or wherever the, the registry ends up being posted and look up two people who would be able to come to the, the unit and help resolve the issue.
But quite frankly, the, the issue that we had, if they were to call the owner, I mean, that's, that's a safety factor for them. I mean, they're going, the neighbors are going to call the, the owner of the house and she's going to put herself or he's going to put themself into an unfit situation. So...
If I might, Ms. Oliva, the idea, especially for law enforcement, since they have worked with the sheriff department.
Right.
The big issue with the incident that got out of hand was that law enforcement did not have permission to enter the property. This would allow law enforcement to get that permission early on instead of having to come back two or three times in order to visually see a violation of the law and under the Fourth Amendment or whatever, you have probable cause to enter the property. So we're taking out the whole probable cause aspect and all you need is permission and you're in and it's handled. So that's the aspect of having an established ordinance with the contact information readily available to the sheriff's department. Sadly, the situation that got out of control, law enforcement could not get permission to enter the property and they did not have the probable cause to enter the property. So those two elements would be addressed in this type of ordinance and I think would make it a lot safer, but I do like the idea of some sort of a hotline that neighbors could report suspected Airbnb's, maybe somebody's not going through the process and we need to really address who's coming in and out of this city in order to ensure public safety. I, I think one other element, too, before I get to Ms. Schneider there, is the transparency of the costs. You have business license listed, you have the other, there's no price tag that people should be aware of, clearly, well, that's the total.
Per violation.
Per violation, but to get a business license, to get the three elements that you need to actually operate appropriately, we need to be clear as to what those costs would be.
The, the city does have some discretion in setting the cost. I think the city has the authority to set a fee for the short-term rental permit to help defray the cost of the program, which includes any extra code enforcement we might want to bring in and the, and any other administrative resources of processing the application, things like that. Cities across the state have taken differing approaches to setting this fee. The, the fees will range anywhere, I believe Santa Monica is, is pretty nominal. I think Napa, I believe, charges $600 for a permit. And the incentives there, the, if the city is interested more in recovering its costs, it can charge or impose a more burdensome fee. If it's more interested in kind of getting people in the, in the door, it may be in the city's interest to impose a lesser fee.
Well, we do know what about business license costs, right? You can at least put that one up there. So whatever, discussing, I think it's important, the cost of inspection, the cost of operating, the cost of enforcement, if we were to go down this path, is important. I'm sorry, Ms. Schneider?
On the staff memo on page two, it talks about, we're not going to be talking about boarding houses at this point in time and that the sheriff's department and code enforcement are going to work on that. Can we have an idea of when that's going to come back for those of us who are dealing with boarding houses? And do we know if anything has happened at Cedar, on Cedar?
So boarding houses are already regulated within our zoning permit, so it's just a matter of enforcing it.
So the example that came up...
They're not permitted, right?
No, they, they are permitted with a conditional use permit.
To the extent that the woman who came the last two council meetings with 60 beds in a duplex is permitted?
That is not, that is not allowed. Yeah, so, so those uses are not allowed.
So what have we done? Because this, tonight's report isn't dealing with that at all, so I'm bringing it up. I recognize the irony. I just want to make sure that this particular neighborhood is being taken care of now.
Yes, and, and to answer that question, that is already legislated, it's a matter of enforcement.
And what have we done?
And resources in code enforcement into getting compliance. So boarding houses are not allowed...
The question is, what has been done in the last two weeks?
So truthfully, I don't think anything, but we are working on moving forward with a more rigorous code enforcement.
So with the mayor's permission, I'd like to see this issue keep coming back to us until we have a good mechanism. I, I mean, there are people living there that have to find a new home, I recognize that, but there, there are neighbors who have been dealing with this for a long, whatever length of time, and I just want to make sure that we're not dropping it or forgetting it and that we come up with a resolution as quickly as possible.
If I might, we clearly, we have a code enforcement officer right now. I am just dumbfounded that the code enforcement officer, with the support, with the sheriff's office, whatever, has not been out there at this point in time to deal with this matter. I, I would like a response within a week, if we have a code enforcement officer that's actually working, that they address this one situation that has been clearly identified to all of us and yet nothing has been done. That's disturbing.
And mayor, I don't think that this is the only property, single-family or duplex in town that is operating as a rooming house, as a boarding house. And I, I just would like to know that we've got a plan, we're moving forward on the plan, that we're treating everybody consistently and that we get it done.
Yeah, and, and those are illegal uses under our existing zoning code. So it's a matter of, like I said, enforcing it, going down the path to...
And to tie, I'm sorry, to tie in with what Councilwoman Oliva said, then, if we're going to develop a phone call system or an, on a website-based system to file whichever, in effect, complaints, that we have a line item there for if you think the home next door is operating as a boarding house, rooming house, whatever, whatever it's going to be called. Okay, with that, then I have all my questions for you. Okay, reading through the staff memo, it talks about these units can operate as long as they have the three, three tools. But what say, you've got a block and half the houses on that block are operating as temporary, short-term residents. So you've, you're saying, okay, well, this house can park two cars in front of the street and that house can park two cars. And I think your implication was if you're renting your house out, your garage and your driveway better be for your visitors and you have to go find a place for your car. That's how I took what you meant.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, that's not clear in here, that's got to be clear on that. And I think that also means for everybody who's renting out the homes, that their garages better be able to fit the number of cars that that garage is registered as, which is another code enforcement issue.
Unless they have the appropriate number of onsite spaces in addition to the garage for the number of rooms.
They've got a long, long driveway.
Yeah, it's, it's sort of a, it's, it's a potential fix also to cap, to a degree cap the number of potential guests or residents at a, at a particular unit as well.
Because...
If, if they only have so many onsite parking spaces and they have to make those available, that then, it precludes, let's say, if they have a larger number of bedrooms or allow more guests to come over. It's, it's another mechanism by which we attempt to put a cap on the number of visitors.
Well, and the good news is if you go through the process that was explained in here and, and then you're going to find out if the garage has been converted to a residential unit, and I would imagine at that point, that converted garage is going to be required to be back to being a garage. So the public needs to be aware of that.
And they would not be able to get a license to operate as a short-term residential rental until that all occurred.
In this, I'm scrolling. I don't think we've resolved the parking issue.
It's a challenge.
The 500 feet rule for notification, I, I gave Mr. Williams an example. Some of our lots, some of our blocks are designed that if you're talking about 400, 500 feet from the front door to the front door of the other properties, you're still missing a lot of things that are angled in. So what do you mean by 500 feet?
Does it make you have a program where it goes out and it...
It's going to circle.
...that's touched by that 500-foot radius gets included in a mailing list?
It's not clear to me when I read this that that was the intent. Can we change the language and make sure that...
To make it more clear? Sure, we can take a tip, accept it that, yes. R3 streets?
Yeah, in here we talk about allowing boarding houses and rooming houses in R3 areas, and I certainly don't know which, which areas are R3.
Which are zoned R3.
This is on page, attachment one, page five of the agenda item.
It's multifamily.
Yeah.
R3 is an area totally multifamily?
Yeah, it's considered multifamily, so I believe what that's alluding to is an R3 zoning district.
A general comment, when I read through the ordinance language, is the complication of taking language intended for hotels and suddenly inserting these standalone or these short-term rental units. When I read the paragraphs, they didn't quite fix. And rather than going into detail here, is it okay? My comments are all written specifically noted in a PDF document to give them to you so that when you bring this to planning, when I read these ordinances, they just didn't click to me. Because one is clearly for hotels and one is clearly for single-family dwellings, and then you're, we're trying to shove in this language that might need its own section.
If I might clarify, I think the, the section of the, the TOT ordinance is an excerpt, and there is a definition in the TOT ordinance that, that defines hotel fairly broadly to include these single-family homes, the room rented out.
And that's exactly my problem. I do not believe that a residential one or a residential two is a place for hotels. I don't like the, I don't want the house next door to me to be a hotel. I didn't...
I'm sorry for the confusion. I think there's a difference between a hotel as defined in the transient occupancy tax ordinance, which is a very broad term to encompass basically anybody who's renting space on their property, and a hotel as defined in the zoning ordinance, which is more your traditional hotel. So the, so maybe I'm unclear about where, which definition of hotel you're referring.
It's exactly that problem. You'll see all the way through the document, I have comments where we're trying to strict, stick in these short-term occupancies into residential neighborhoods and treating them like a hotel, and they are not a hotel. And the perfect version of it, it was a hosted property that wanted to make a little of extra money, they rent out a room, they help the, their, their visitors find the neat places in the community, and they were not intended, maybe Airbnb intended it, but I don't see it in a residential neighborhood intended to be a hotel or to operate anywhere like a hotel. And so when you've got these references in there, it scares me and it will prevent me from voting on this because it's not, because I just don't believe that we need a hotel on Lombard Lane or on Crestview or anything like that. They were not intended to be hotels, they were intended to be neighborhoods. Tom, a lot of mine are just kind of...
If I might, legal counsel, you're referring in reference here to specific code sanctions, so that's why I'm seeing hotel tax and all of that.
Yes, so I believe all the references, I don't think that there are any references to hotel in the short-term rental ordinance, all the references to hotel should be in the transient occupancy tax ordinance.
Right, in the collecting and remitting of how the platforms. So it's, Ms. Schneider is, it's kind of a crossover in that not encouraging hotels in any way, shape or form. It is listed in the collecting and remitting section.
I'm just saying it's causing confusion, and if I'm a public member reading through what I can legally do or not do with my property, it's confusing. If I'm going down and looking, again, my concern is for the people living next door, having lived next to one of these. And there's a section in here, and, and I'll bring it to, give it to you, and it talks about one incident is one complaint.
Hold on one second. Counsel, do you have something?
Well, just to...
Sorry, Ms. Schneider, there's two people talking.
To answer your concern, so it, it seems like the taxation ordinance uses the term hotel and uses it broadly over everyone who's renting a room. I guess you're... And I guess your concern is, by instituting this program, we're now collecting a hotel tax from other, from within these residential areas. And you prefer not to have that term used in that way because you feel it causes confusion.
I think it opens the door.
Okay, so the, we can look at whether we can change the terminology. There's just one sensitivity, and that is that the tax, if you change the tax too much, it may need voter approval. So we're trying to, I think, spread that. If there's a way we can clarify it, we certainly don't want to cause confusion, so maybe there's a way so that that terminology can be adjusted without, you know, changing the tax structure too much. But clearly, hotels are dealt with in the zoning ordinance as hotels, and they're only allowed in certain zones, and generally, it requires a condition of use permit. So I, it's not as a, you may have a different view in terms of, should we have, should we have these in residential areas at all? Some cities absolutely prohibit them. But I think the guidance we got from the last meeting was that, because people were renting these as a business, that the city's view was to permit them, but to control them. And so, I just make sure that's clear, because that was our direction unless that's changed.
And that's somewhat where I am, but when I read through this, and I look at the practicality of what Magnolia could become, or what Poplar could become, or Lewis, these streets that are very close to downtown, that are very close to the transit hub, they could, in a very short period of time, be nothing but rental property. And I'm concerned about that, which brings me to another question of mine. Have any of the other cities that have these, have put in an ordinance, controlled the number of non-hosted operations? So I'm more open to approving a hosted facility. I feel much more comfortable about that than I do about non-hosted ones. Let me be frank, I don't like the non-hosted Airbnbs in a residential neighborhood. So, given that we're trying to learn as we go along, if we have the non-hosted ones, can we limit the number? Or can we put in a certain set of additional requirements, that if there are problems, they're gone without months or years going by to collect complaints? Because later on in the document, it says that, looking at the incident at Lombardi, that could be taken as one strike against that, that person. It says, all of those incidents are just taken as one thing. So if there was a garbage problem, a gunshot, and screaming, that's just one incident, not three incidents. And that concerns me, too. That, to me, that's three separate hits against that Airbnb locality. And in fact, if there's gunshots, that means that that property should not be rented out in that fashion. It meant that there was nobody there keeping control of that property. So when you read that section in there, it's really, it means, wow, you could do all kinds, you could break all kinds of things, and it only counts as one problem. Does that make sense, Tom?
I know what section you're speaking, I'm looking at it now. I think we can take a look at-
Which section is that?
I'm trying to scroll through quickly so I'm not right at them in-
Talking about section-
I believe it's seven point-
Seven point three zero point zero seven zero lettered. It is, where'd it go?
I believe it's-
It's E. Am I quoting the wrong section? That's the section I'm looking at.
If it's okay, I can give it to you, and it's all marked as you scroll through the various documents. So another problem that I have is about authorizing agents becoming permitees. And so you've got somebody that lives, let's use one of the examples that a gentleman brought up. Their house next door, the owner's passed away. Their son lives in San Diego. They've been renting it out as an Airbnb, rather than going the full step and renting it as housing, which to me would be what I would do. And this poor household with their three-year-old are smelling dope all the time. How do we, how do any of these rules protect that family? Because the way they can rent it out, they could, a non-hosted could rent out for 100 days, which is basically every weekend, which means that poor family has the potential of tobacco smoke, or cigarette smoke, or drugs, or just loud partying going on every weekend, and that affects their quality of life. And I don't see, after reading through all of this, how we can help that family on the corner of Elder Avenue, and I can't tell if they're here or not, but they were here two weeks ago.
So if I might respond, I think there are a couple of different mechanisms in the ordinance that would prevent something like that from happening. First, the permitee must be, may only obtain a permit for their primary residence. So if you're totally an absentee landlord, that's, you wouldn't be able to get a permit.
No, they'd be a no-host.
No, they wouldn't be able to permit.
Need somebody within one hour, one hour away.
Oh, okay, I hadn't interpreted that way. That's great. Okay.
So even, even if you, it is your primary residence, you're only allowed to have a, to have a non-hosted, or 100 non-hosted nights per year. So if I'm renting, if I live in a house, and I'm going away for the weekend, and I want to rent it for this weekend, that's two nights. And I can, and I would be able to do that up to 100 nights per year. But if I don't live in the house, I can't do it at all, because it's not my primary residence. The second mechanism would be the, the permit revocation. This is section seven point three zero point zero nine zero.
What page are you on?
Bottom of seven.
So if the short-term rental is detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, then the permit can be revoked. That's independent of the three-strikes rule. And the, and something like consistently smelling marijuana, or something like that, it would be at the discretion of the director. If the director finds this is detrimental to public health, then the director could potentially revoke the permit. As to the, the three strikes, all the incidents counting as, or all violations from an incident counting as one strike, the idea there is that the ordinance gives us the ability to both cite the, the permitee and the renter. So if the, if we go after both the permitee and the renter, we don't want that counting as, as two strikes against the, against the permitee for the purposes of permit revocation. That's only one strike. So perhaps it wasn't clear, but that was the intention.
Well, I think all three points, I'm understanding a little bit better, but if I'm having a hard time, then the public who might be putting one of these in, or might be coming a host, or an absent, or a no-hosted operation, are going to have a hard time understanding it. So basically, can we, maybe not in the ordinance, but in the, the regulations or the application go into a little bit more detail? I know ordinances don't have as much talking in them. But somehow make it more understandable, because I didn't interpret, if you're a no-host, you can't do that if you live more than an hour away, because you can just sign that off to a property manager. So I'm living in San Diego, I sign it off to a property manager, and property manager responds 30 minutes in a phone call, or an hour in place, still got the same problem.
So I think one, one possible solution would be to put out a FAQ or some, some other narrative descriptions, once the ordinance is in place, that, that put the kind of legalese into plain English for people who are applying for permits, and that could address some potential concerns.
Okay, I mean, that's, if we can see that, and that'll come to the Planning Commission, so there'll be more elaboration on that.
Are you speaking of the flyer? I think what you're envisioning maybe is a flyer that we would develop, maybe in our planning department, that we put out for helping people understand the process, and kind of getting them acquainted with it, and what they have to go through. Is that what you're speaking of?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we do have those in community development. I think if and when an ordinance is adopted, and we have, understand what our approach, we could put that together and have that made available for the public.
Could we have a sample of home rules?
A sample of the home rules?
Home rules. All my tenants get a list of home rules that has grown over the years, right down to that I expect them to recycle. If they're renting my house, this is what I expect them to do.
I'm not sure that we could, the only, the issue I see with that is enforcement. I'm not positive that we have really the, the ability or the bandwidth to sort of enforce some of these things that would be really imposed inside of a home.
Can we give them, though, as, as something to help the potential hosts, then? I got my home rules from the California Apartment Association. I've just grown them over years.
That we can look into.
We can do that. I think the city of Napa does that. I think it's, again, it becomes a question of enforcement, if it's, it's difficult for a code enforcement officer, for example, to tell that the permitee isn't, or the, a renter isn't recycling.
And I looked at that today, and then I figured that wasn't a place to go. But somebody smoking dope in my house, which makes the walls and the carpet stink, that is something that I would assume most landlords would want to know about. So I think we can go a little bit stronger in that direction.
We do have some operating restrictions, and we can definitely add additional restrictions to strengthen.
Because that still won't help the poor gentleman and his three-year-old, trying to keep her safe. So what are we going to do about air quality issues?
Ms. Schneider, again, I think it was pointed out, just to clarify, detrimental to public health, and that would be where we could address that here, public health, safety, and welfare.
Nope.
That would be, and hopefully, if we can pursue some sort of a hotline, as much protection as we can put in, so that the neighbors would be able to report that sort of idea. And then also to suggesting, as she said, these house rules people might want to implement, should they decide to exercise this.
Can I elaborate just a little bit on a potential hotline, as far as maintaining that hotline, and staffing the ability for us to effectively show the community that we're addressing their issues? Our intent was, is that during business hours, that we encourage them to contact our code enforcement number, that our code enforcement officer pulls, that we can react to in a reasonable timeframe. And then after hours, those calls will be directed to our law enforcement, so that after hours, where there's disturbances that fall outside more of a, more of a legal issue than a code enforcement disturbance, we would direct them to those phone numbers, was our intent. We could look at doing an additional type of hotline, I'm just wondering if those two might suffice with what you're looking for.
As, as a starting point. Go ahead, Ms. Schneider.
This is back to the primary residential residence information. What's to stop someone, and then it went into this whole section. If I bought a house here in Milbury, and then I bought another house, and I put my child's name under the ownership of that one, I now own two homes. But I can use somebody else's name as a primary resident, it's cheating the rules. How can we capture or find that? What if I have a house here, a house in San Bruno, a house in Burlingame, and one in the city? And I'm using all of them as my primary resident? I would imagine that under the county assessor, that's where you get your 700, your 7,000 homeowner exemption? But how else do you catch when people lie on your primary residence? I'm sorry, you can see, I'm not very trusting. I had a dead body next to me for two weeks. I'm not trusting.
Yeah, I might, maybe look to Jared for some additional guidance on answering that one.
So I think our definition of primary residence captures that. The part of the definition of primary residence is the, the house where you sleep for at least 265 days a year. So if your child is sleeping at that other house 265 days a year, then you can get a permit. If you're, if, if your child is living with you, and you're just renting to that other house, then you would not be able to qualify for a short-term rental permit.
So the only way we might capture that is if the residents nearby notice something that's a little bit off.
So enforcement is a difficulty with a standard like that, but there, there, I think that's, there aren't a number, there aren't very, we're lacking in better ideas in terms of how to more concretely enforce that.
We do have under seven point three point oh nine oh, section two, the permitee has provided material false, misleading information and any submitted or required under this chapter, so that's another level of enforcement.
I would just note that that term domicile has come into play with regard to politicians who run for office outside of where they live, and it has resulted in some going to jail. So domicile is a, is a legal term, it's enforced. You can tell by, as you mentioned, the tax exemption, where you register to vote, your DMV registration, all those things. And so, you know, if you, so it is, I think it is a meaningful term.
Okay. Under the law, they're very strict about that, yes.
Okay, moving along, I agree with Councilman, or Vice Mayor Lee, that 1,000 isn't enough. These people are running a business. They can pay more.
Is that it, Ms. Schneider?
No, the, the section, it's the only place where they put 1,000 in here. It's-
It's a violation. It's a thousand dollars.
That's, for us, the $1,000, based on what work we're going to do, I'm sure that the work that the sheriff's department has already done at Lombard Lane, Lombardi Lane, is over $1,000. So I would go back and look at what that cost as an example, and that becomes the basis for, for whatever that fee should be. But I think, it feels like $1,000 is too little.
And I, I think, prospectively, if I might, sometime, that was an extreme situation that should never have happened. But we can, this is a stepping stone. So it could be a small step at this point in time, and we would see how it progresses, but we can always come back and increase it.
Okay, I'd be open to that. At the same time, this was one thing that finally came up. It took gunshots to get it here. The dead body next to me didn't make the city manager blink an eye.
Understood. We are here now, trying to address this as quickly as possible. Do you have a few more, Ms. Schneider?
I got a few more.
Okay.
A lot of them-
Can I, can I clear up one that might, I think that was misled for you?
Sure.
On, on the 24 hours, they need to be reached within 24 hours. So like the short, Councilmember Schneider says, it would solve it because the guy lives in San Diego, and he has to live an hour away, or whatever it is, or a day away. They have to just be reached, because I think most of these are used, that you're going on vacation for a month to Europe, so you, short-term, you're, you're renting out, you can't be to the house within an hour period of time.
I believe the way it's crafted is that we want them to be available 24 hours per day, and they have to be able to be on-site within an hour.
Well, you, that's, that's, that's not the, yeah. Well, I just want to make that clear, because you asked-
I appreciate that.
It's in there, it's in there.
You're running a business. You're going to have to be like a business.
You, you can't take, that's not going to work.
Someone may have a business, being the property manager or the authorized agent to show up, but we want someone to be there in an hour, just for this same reason. And so, that's the requirement.
It's unrealistic.
Maybe that means when you come to planning, you should have more explanation of that, just to help. I'm confused about, you've got two bedrooms, you're renting, or you've got a bedroom, you're renting out a bedroom, two people, plus you can have two other people. Who are these two other people?
Guests, people that might show up their front.
So I'm a host, and I rented two people, and they get to bring their guests?
Correct.
Okay, how that could be interpreted is, and it's daytime versus nighttime. Daytime, you could have eight people there.
Double correct, yes.
So that means the house next door to me could have eight cars during the daytime.
Well, that's why we, we try to do a restriction, that they can only have the number of people, where they can accommodate the number of cars on-site.
I don't see how you can enforce that. I don't get that. Plus, if part of what Milbury is doing is, we have people sleeping here because they work at night, and they're sleeping in a house operating as a boarding house, even if it's only one bedroom, we could have a daytime population and a nighttime population. I, my gut is telling me this could be abused.
I don't disagree with your gut. I think it's being abused currently, it's, because they're currently operating illegally, I think. So our understanding was, is that we're trying to really take a first stab at really crafting a, a difficult-to-craft ordinance, because we're trying to fit, you know, a square, you know, a peg, around peg and a square. So it's something that we're looking to devise, that we, we thought the intent was, is to perhaps allow this, to permit it, to give us more information, and to, over time, let's say, build upon what we learned and other communities learned, to, to have those tools to track this, to enforce it, to, to deny the permit when they, when they're causing issues, and then give law enforcement and code enforcement more tools. That's how we approached it, and it may obviously need more revision over time.
And maybe if we have hosts in the audience, when they get up for public speaking, they can explain how this might work at their location. I stayed in bed and breakfasts in Europe and in Asia, and I have never brought a guest to someone else's home. That just seems really weird to me.
Well, so it, I, I think part of that is, is that what the two-person is really also trying to preclude, the ability for them to have parties. And so, you know, obviously, they're renting out, one person rents it, and 200 people are showing up for a party. That gives us a mechanism by which we can say, two people or more, there's a problem here. This is a nuisance. So I think the intent is, is for that, to limit parties and larger gatherings, perhaps, like we talked about weddings, different things, that would not be allowed as a residential short-term rental. However, I don't know that it would be all that uncustomary, let's say, for like, somebody to go somewhere, they might also be renting, they share the house to have a dinner, I don't know, you know, they might, people get together.
You look at it a different way, although, let's say I'm a married couple, and they have four kids, and they want to rent a, a two-bedroom. So you've got two, two, plus two.
And I did consider that it could have been a family with small children. I just think that that language is problematic. Okay.
We clearly understand enforcement is going to be an issue, and it's-
It would depend on what the rental, yeah, I used to rent houses in Tahoe all the time, but I would do whatever the rental agreement allowed.
But they allow you to have barbecues with the neighbors in the house.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a, that's-
Let's say they're renting numerous houses, and then they come over to, to get together at some period of time.
Okay, I already asked about the cannabis laws. There's nothing, we have a cannabis committee. Will the cannabis subcommittee be looking at what?
Again, I think we're going back to the public nuisance aspect of it.
Okay.
It's not permitted in public. It's not permitted in public.
May I offer?
I just would like to emphasize, this is an initial step to something we have nothing for right now, and the goal is really to take these steps and make them work. I don't think we're going to have perfection, that's for sure, but something.
May I offer maybe a small solution that's possible? When I worked for the Air District, we always got these types of calls, and you just call the 1-800-334-ODER line. If the smoke, it could be smoke, wood smoke, smoke, cigarette smokes, pot, whatever it is that's coming outside, they'll send somebody. And they do have mechanisms to find the source. So it's 1-800-334-ODER.
Okay, I have more bits and pieces, but I know I'm boring my fellow counsel. So when I looked at all the applications, they don't include, to me, the application should have more phone numbers on there. There should be a better clarification of the actual owner of the property and whoever they have given permission to use that. It should include country, it should include state. It probably does include state, but it doesn't explicitly say that. It doesn't include any kind of driver's license, passport, or any other kind of permanent identification number on these people. And I'll give you my example. The, when the house next door was causing its problems, I contacted the county assessor's office. They gave me the address of the owner. It was number 2 Trump Tower in Seoul, Korea. I sent a certified letter to talk about the problems that were happening because it was four pages of problems happening at that house. And it turned out that the county had given me the wrong address. So I spent $20 for a certified letter to Seoul, Korea for nothing. What did happen is the tenants at the house on the other side came back because that house had owned that house. He immediately sold that house. So makes you wonder what was going on in that house. The tenants were lovely. But when I did get the other address, it turned out to be the house next door even though the owners lived in another country, and they had their 16 and 17-year-old kids living there, unchaperoned. So having a better, actual, real addresses is the only way you can try to enforce this. I could never enforce. I couldn't get the city to help, and I don't want other people to have to be caught in that same thing. So I'd like to see a passport number, a driver's license number, and/or whatever else, a public, an identification number of some kind.
A what?
Maybe a background check or something? Or is that a little bit too invasive?
No, that's probably, it's just, if you're going to try to match people, if you're going to try to find out, are they having this problem in multiple areas, having a unique identifier is important. And that's kind of my questions on the application. I looked through the application, I said, well, this would be too weak for me as a landlord, but if this is where you want to start, there you go. Mine's done.
I just wanted to piggyback on Councilwoman Oliva's comments is that the other half of this is, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to social engineer people's behavior on these short-term rentals, but the biggest, the other big problems is trying to keep these people walking in with guns into our city. So we really need to address that other issue. And this is not part of this, I understand that, but as a comment to staff, I'd like to see us address that issue. The other thing, too, is I want to make sure that people who are running good short-term rentals, you know, and helping their neighbors, but there's always going to be somebody who doesn't like the fact that somebody's renting out their space. So how do we balance it out and make sure, I mean, what I want to see is some sort of policy to make sure that somebody's not just using the system to harass their neighbors. And I just want to make sure that, you know, everybody's treated fairly.
We're going to move on to public comment, if that's all right with everybody? Please. I think everybody who's probably going to be speaking tonight are residents of Millbrae. The goal here is that we work together and we try to approach this so that we ensure the safety of everyone. And attacking our neighbors or making comments about what other people are saying is not productive. We want to hear from everybody, and we're trying to do the best we can in this situation. But when it comes down to it, we all have to live together here. So if we could respect each other and listen, because that's the key, we want to listen to everybody's comments, it would be a lot more productive and a lot more neighborly. So if you wouldn't mind, I know this has been an extremely traumatic situation that brought this about, and that's why we're trying to act as quickly as possible to get regulations that will work and be understood. And again, nothing's perfect to start with, but we have nothing that we can rely on right now, and that's why we're here, and that's why staff and council have been working so hard, and actually Airbnb helping us out, too. We are quite aware that there are other companies out there that we are going to have to bring in under this umbrella and make this work. So if everybody would please be respectful of one another, that would be exceptionally helpful. I have some speaker slips here now. There are more over there if you would like to, if you haven't filled one out yet. So first, I have a paper-clipped one, I think it's a tag team. Michael and Joe?
Do you speak here or stand?
Please, you need to speak to the microphone.
Hi there. My name is Michael Lawellin-Williams. I'm semi-retired, part-time professor at the University of San Francisco. My wife and I have been Airbnb hosts for nearly 18 months. We have never had any badly behaved or noisy guests. The regular revenue has been a lifesaver for us, helping to pay our bills. Our concern is anything that's going to interfere with that revenue will likely cause us hardship. One question I had was regarding one element in the legislation. I just want to be sure that the $1,000 deposit applies to non-present hosts rather than hosts, because that would just be so crazy. Another question I would have is, we are full-time hosts. We've always had very good guests. But let's say I have a very sick nephew, perhaps in a week or two, we're going to have to take off to the UK and go to his funeral. For those two nights that we're away, we're always going to have a house sitter because we have our dogs and all of that good stuff. Does that mean we're going to have to register as non-hosts for the five days we're going to be away? I would hope not. But all I would ask is you to take note of what we've said, and thank you for that. Joe wants to say a few words.
Yes, and very interesting to listen to everything tonight, but our Airbnb, it's been so wonderful working with Airbnb. We have had no seamless, seamless processes. We have great dialogue with the people that inquire about our property. It's a house, it's a private suite, it's, they have a washer and dryer, private entrance. We do have lovely dogs. We have so many people that adore meeting those dogs, and we've met some wonderful people, and we get great reviews. We get five stars, we're a super host, and we just really enjoy it. And it's kind of just so special to open up that extra, it's a downstairs suite in our home, and it's just wonderful to be able to have people enjoy it. We have a gorgeous view, and hate for it to go away. Because I do think we really, we really, really make a wonderful contribution to Millbrae, and I know these people, we have lots of property of where to go to to eat and whatnot, and it's, it's been a game changer. It's the reason why we love being in Millbrae, and we've been here for eight years, and it's special.
Thank you very much.
We hope we can make it all work.
Thank you, and we're sorry about your relative, too. Thank you much. And so I'll remind people, too, there are lights up there, you have three minutes. Donald Culkin?
Mayor and council members, my name's Don Culkin. I've been a member of this community for about 15 years. My kids went to school here. I just wanted to tell you about my experience. It was on February 25th. I'll just read my notes from that day. This also goes to, with Ms. Schneider mentioning the hotline. Well, the best hotline was 911, and we used it, and it didn't work. Here's what happened. My wife Valerie was downstairs asleep at 11:30. There was a big party that started. I called 911 at 12:27. I reported people in the street, they were drinking, yelling, screaming, there was a possible fight. There was three men around my cars in the front of my house and in my front yard. One of them was peeing on my lawn. The other one had a bottle of Hennessy brandy in his hand. That ended up on the hill across the street. It was picked up three days later. I requested a unit be sent to my house when I dialed 911. I ID'd myself, my address. I said I couldn't see much else from where I was, and I hung up. A moment later, I got a call back and was asked the same questions. I repeated the information about who I was, where I was, and what happened. My wife came upstairs and told me that she was upset. I told the dispatcher, when I was on the phone with him the second time, that I'd already given him all the information, please send a unit, and I hung up to talk to my wife about what was happening downstairs on the other part of the house. I told her the police were on their way, but they didn't show up, that I know of. I say that because, well, I didn't stay and watch out the window the entire time, but the party lasted in the street till 4:30 in the morning. I would assume that if the police came, something might have been done. I told my wife the police are on the way, but they didn't show up, not that I know of. The party continued till approximately 5:00 AM outside in the street, the rear yard, and the entire house. At one point, there were about 50 to 60 people raving and screaming outside. Parking was taken completely up and down the block with broken glass left in the middle of the turnaround at the end of the block. Other garbage was scattered about the street, sidewalk, and hill, and I sent pictures in to the city to show how much garbage and crap was left, including down at the creek, which is, we have a wonderful creek in the backyard, and it gets a lot of weed and overgrowth at certain times of year when the creek isn't really active. But you could see cigarette butts out there, there were beer cans or cigarettes. It's a matter of time. Right where I live, it's a little tinderbox, and it's just going to take one cigarette butt, and there's numerous, you can go out and count them on the street right now. It's going to be one, and then there's going to be houses on fire on Millbrae Avenue and somewhere up in downhill crest.
Mr. Culkin?
Yes?
Did you ramp up there and?
Sure. I'm sorry.
No. Don't be.
I had spoken with the owner, and when he first moved in, I thought it was going to be he and his wife, as he had told me it was going to be, I was going, great, you know, I got some good people moving in next door to us, we'll have some peace. And it turns out that the post office sent the wrong, the tax papers, and it went into my mailbox, and it turns out it wasn't he and his wife. It was he and three other people and an LLC. So it's a limited liability corporation. The house was purchased so it could be done as, I'm assuming, as an Airbnb. It wasn't done to, you know, for the neighborhood or to add anything to the community. It was to add money to the people's pockets who are the LLC. So there is no way to police that. If something did happen, how am I supposed to sue an LLC? If there is a primary residence that's supposed to stay in the house, well, it's an LLC. It's, you can't actually go after anybody. There is no responsible person. So these are things that, it just doesn't work, it can't work. And we're zoned R1. I would never have bought a beautiful house up in the hill if I knew it was going to be a hotel. He's done additions, or he's trying to do add-ons to the house without building permits. He's on hold right now for one. And nothing has been done legally, and this is just going to get worse, and there is no respect with this, as far as I'm concerned. He's not done permits, and this is just putting money in his pocket, not, he's not doing anything for the city of Millbrae. And I don't sleep well at night because of it. The neighbor on the other side, his renters, are threatening to leave. They don't have peace anymore. There's been numerous parties that have not been addressed.
Mr. Culkin?
Thank you very much.
I'm sure the Sheriff's Department there would be very interested in getting some further information from you. That should.
I do have the dates and times.
That's great.
And I would like to know, since I did speak to dispatch, it is recorded, why wasn't there, who's responsible for not showing up?
So would we. Thank you very much for being here. I'm sorry. Mr. Larson?
Greetings, Mayor Pappin, Vice Mayor Lee, Councilmember Hollibur, Councilmember Oliva, and Councilmember Schneider. It's wonderful to see you as always. You know, I had a chance to review everything that was talked about tonight, earlier this morning. It was, it's great, and I really, really appreciate and want to thank everybody for giving a first step on how to resolve these problems. I really feel for everybody who's here, who's a homeowner, and also for everybody who's an Airbnb or short-term host. But there are some concerns that were brought up to me that I told everybody that I would bring up tonight. Now, a lot of these items have already been touched on, which is wonderful. Each of you have touched on these items, but I just wanted to emphasize that these are very, very important to various neighbors and community members that I've talked to. Non-hosted, that is a very, very big problem with a lot of people. The fact that some houses would be not occupied by an owner or somebody who is supposed to be living there as a resident is a very, very big problem, and a lot of people don't like the non-hosted idea. If it's possible to have non-hosted prohibited, that would be ideal. So that's one point that needs to be touched on, please. And then other people have talked about the R1 through R4 zoning. I know that you were talking about that tonight. There were various people that were touching on that, which is important. Apparently, R1 and R2 are already prohibited from having these types of short-term rentals, so that's one other thing that people are concerned about. 100 days, now, is that 100 days just during the year altogether? Or is it 100 days consecutively? Can somebody rent out their home as an Airbnb or short-term rental for 100 consecutive days? Or is it scattered throughout the year? And also, one thing that is supposed to be effective in other cities that goes along with that is a renter is not allowed to stay for no fewer than 100 days. Now, I'm not sure how that works. That might be something that you could look into. That might be helpful and might be able to clarify how that works with other cities. Now, there was a report, somebody had called me and told me about this. Apparently, I'm the 800 hotline, and there is a concern on Magnolia 321, Magnolia Avenue. There were reports of bunk beds and other types of activity there, so that's something that needs to be looked into. And I told this particular homeowner that I would mention that to you. Enforcement, I know that's been talked about over and over and over, but full-time staff, some sort of hotline to have available for residents, and also some sort of recourse, too, or a call back, some way for residents to talk about problems. I know I have my red light, I'm sorry, I'm finishing up ghost houses. That was another concern. People are talking about how these ghost houses are scattered now all over Millbrae, non-occupied homes. The houses end up being deteriorated after a while, and gardens end up going to weed. And car break-ins, this is something that might be of concern, too, that might be part of the Airbnb problem. Nobody knows, but they seem to have arisen all of Nobody knows, but they seem to have arisen all at the same time. So if you could please address these issues, something that might be comforting to the neighbors and to the residents of Millbrae, that would be very, very helpful. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Paul Pigler? I'm sorry. Thank you. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Did I spell it Paul?
Oh, Brian. What am I doing? I'm sorry. No, you spelled it Brian. Excuse me. My apologies.
No worries. Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilpeople. Appreciate your time. So I'm just, I did the brief bio. I'm just going to say, I did that, this is my second time here. I introduced myself, I'm just going to read it so I can get my time out of the way. I introduced myself and provided a brief bio at the last meeting. My name is still Brian Pigler and I'm still a property owner in Millbrae. I do live on Elder Avenue. I'm not so inclined to give my address now after some of the things I heard, but should be noted, I've been on that side of the podium for 30 years, wearing a uniform of that nature. I know how, what it is and I've been, you know, yelled at, screamed at, and all those things. And I do not want to seem or act aggressive in any fashion. But we are that house on Elder with the four-year-old child. Thank you for mentioning that. So in regards to what the Planning Department just came up with, I didn't, I don't know, maybe the guy, Mr. Larson, got a copy. I didn't get a copy, a chance to even copy or review that draft or appreciated that before we came to the meeting, but didn't so. But with all due respect, who cares about the host's property? I don't. I know Mr. Lee made an issue about that. Who cares about any damage to the host's property? Who cares, honestly, who cares about the safety of the house? Sorry, to be honest with you. Because that host wants to play Russian roulette. You know, if they like to do that with their own safety and their own property, let them go ahead and do it, right? You can play all the Russian roulette that you like, but I'd rather not have the host designate and dictate whether or not me and my family are going to play Russian roulette, right? So that 500 feet is something that the gentleman here spoke to as, those are the people who are going to be notified within 500 feet. That's a ridiculous number, to be honest with you. That's no number. I mean, how far is that next bullet going to travel? All right? That next bullet can travel from that side of Millbrae all the way to the other side of Millbrae. It can travel the distance of Millbrae. You know what? Everybody in that neighborhood should be notified that an Airbnb is coming into that neighborhood. I'm going to talk five, six, seven blocks. Because those are all the people that those extra cars are going to be parking in front of their house. Those are all the people that are going to be affected by the late-night parties. Those are all the people that are going to be affected. It's not 500 feet. It's 5,000, thousands of feet. It could be five miles. All right? So that's all I have to say on that issue. What I wrote, and I don't know if the red light's on or not, but is real quick, that approximately one month ago, I saw the local news broadcast and I read the direct quotes. This has already been covered, but this is what I was going to talk about today before this issue was placed before us. And it covered that, the local papers covered that alleged shooting. Mayor Pappin said, and was quoted multiple times regarding short-term rentals and specifically Airbnb, that Airbnb is a business and a business license is required to operate in Millbrae. 311 Elder has been operating solely as a business associated with Airbnb since at least September 2017. I was able to establish that the operators did not and do not have a business license to operate in Millbrae, a business in Millbrae. So approximately three weeks ago, following the directions of the Millbrae City employees and many confusing, past the buck visits City Hall, I filed a code ordinance violation complaint with the Planning Department and gave them all the information about the owners and what's been happening, the whole, they had everything. You know, absolutely to no avail, right? I even heard you, Ms. Pappin, tell somebody to contact me last, and I haven't contacted. All right? So no follow-up with me, no home business, no phone call, nothing. Which I find ridiculous, because when I sat on that side, or your side, you know what? There's no way I would tell somebody to do something and not do some follow-up. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it. You know, it's just a definite, as the gentleman talked about here, just totally disrespectful. That, we're already going through what we're going through and then get treated like that by the city. I ask that a moratorium be placed on all non-hosted Airbnbs, of which the property owner is not living on the premises, operating in Millbrae until something is, some kind of acceptable decision is made. And by acceptable, I mean not just acceptable for those associated and profiting from, with Airbnb. I mean, something, some form or fashion, how can you have these meetings and be working with Airbnb and no citizens' input is part of that? There's no community action group involved? I just don't understand how that could happen and why the citizens who live and have, or who are victimized by these places, aren't part of this, the process of trying to find some acceptable compromise. I find it incredulous. And in the least, in, I believe it's most likely illegal that we have no say-so in this matter. So that's all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm an Airbnb host. I've been doing it for a little over two years right now. For me, to be honest, Airbnb is not a profit. It's just the only way to stay in a neighborhood. I'm a single mom. I've been saving for a very long time to move in here so my daughter can go to Green Hill School. And Airbnb is, if it's somehow regulated and we are not able to continue it, we'll have to get out of the neighborhood. And again, I never had for two, over than two years, never had bad experiences with the guests. If I had any concerns, Airbnb has a hotline where I am able to call and they'll take an action right away by asking guests to leave. I think Ms. Oliva was so right when she pointed out that actions should be taken for the safety, rather than controlling all Millbrae residents who are trying to stay here. Not everyone was so lucky to buy the property 30 years ago. Now, as you know, prices are crazy and any young families who are trying to get in here, it's super, super hard. And short-term rentals are very helpful. And I think Airbnb does a really good job. And as some of you mentioned, there are other ways around. And I think the regulations are going to be in place, that people would be not following them, but trying to find the ways to avoid. And I think it's pretty obvious. And I think that would create more danger for the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the final speaker slippiness. Anyone else would like to? Okay. The public has brought up some deeply concerning issues, which, Mr. Williams, you knew here, but Mr. Pigler was here again last week. What does it take for issues like this to be addressed? We have the Sheriff's Department here. We have city staff here. For people to take time out of their lives and not get the big pay that we all do here. You know, this is, it's just not acceptable that these issues are not being addressed. In particular, the ones that are as, been clearly identified as public safety issues right now. Mr. Williams, can you, we've had two residents up here that the safety is right now at issue. Can you offer us some sort of?
Assurance that we will.
Besides taking the microphone apart, yeah.
Yes, we, I understand and I will make sure that we provide focus and have it the top priority, beginning tomorrow morning, to not only investigate the situation on Elder, I would like to talk to the resident, get a little bit more information on exact residences, addresses, that type of thing. But I can assure you, we will make it the top priority. I'll personally work with code enforcement to make sure that we're on top of it and work with the Sheriff's Department to find out a little bit more information on what we can perhaps do to see how we can improve and provide better enforcement.
Here's his personal information. We have it. I'm going to hand it to you, okay? So I don't want this buried and I would like it addressed as quickly as possible. It's just, it's frustrating to us as electeds and it's frustrating to the residents that they take time out of their busy lives to come here and describe these situations to us, and then it just goes into a black hole. And it's just not acceptable. So some things need to be done and we need to, at our next meeting, know that this matter was addressed. And I hope that the chief will address Mr. Colkin's situation. A party going on till 5:00 AM is not acceptable. I know this happened a while ago, but again, completely not acceptable. So we would like a formal response that these matters have been addressed. Now, for the ordinance, we've heard from both sides here. And I think not everybody's going to be happy, but unless we get something on the books that we can address and work with, then we're just going backwards. And I don't think any of us want that to happen. It serves a service for some, but we need to work on how those who want to take this Russian roulette chance with their homes don't interfere with the quality of life of those around them. So I think this is a first step. I would like some further information on homes. Now, for those, for the information, we know a lot of homes in Millbrae are owned by a trust or an LLC, as was described here. This ordinance is specifically being set up that if you are not, if this is not a primary residence, you are owned by a corporation, then we have some way to crack down on the people like this LLC that's operating within our city. That would be prohibited. You just don't buy a home that you can turn around and Airbnb it. That is my understanding with this ordinance. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So that's a starting point here. I do think if we pursue this as it is written at this point in time, we need to have legs and muscle in enforcing it as quickly as possible. And this is, I'm just speaking here and the rest of the council can speak up, but I think this is a good first step. And if it doesn't work, we can come right back and just do the complete opposite here and say absolutely not. But we have residents on both sides here and our primary goal is public safety and not having the people that are taking advantage of these platforms interfering with the quality of life of others. So the accountability has to be a primary focus in whatever way, shape, and form staff can come up with here. What was mentioned is there's a code enforcement number that will be clearly labeled on these flyers or the Sheriff's Department or 911. If that doesn't work, I mean, we need to know that code enforcement is going to be responding within 24 hours. I mean, that needs to be clearly spelled out on these forms. And there has to be some responsiveness. And I suspect that Ms. Hildebrandt or someone there, we're going to need a service that is able to track these companies, is able to let us know what platforms are operating within our city, some sort of way that we know what's happening here. So I don't want to do this half-assed. If we go down this path, and there seems to be some consensus, I want it to be enforceable. And I want it to be something that the residents know they can rely on if their quality of life is being negatively impacted. And I would suspect that maybe, how long does it take to get something before the Planning Commission? How long does it take to make this operational? And how long does it take for us to see if it's working? Because public safety means we have to act quickly and make sure this works. So if we come back in two months, if this happens to be approved tonight, it goes to planning, it's enacted, we really need to have the second step, which is the tracking and enforceability of this. And staff needs a full-time code enforcement person. We need to know this is going to work, or we're just sitting here doing nothing. So let's have a plan that has an end game, that works and that we can turn back in three months and say, is this working or isn't it? What's happening? But right now, we have nothing that we can track or enforce, and that deeply concerns me. Any comments from anybody?
I don't think I'm prepared to pass this tonight because I think there's way too many holes in this. I mean, as far as the simple thing like 321 Magnolia Avenue, I just looked up the owner. So I mean, that's how simple this is. I think that there's a lot of, what you said is 100% I'm behind it with public safety, but yet, when you say things like people that own, they buy their homes to rent it out as a business, yes. But that's not based upon the title of an LLC. People buy their homes and have it in an LLC for other purposes than an Airbnb or a business. So I think that to, to say tonight, we're going to push this forward, we talk about half, yeah, half-assed, is that what the word you used? Yeah, it was. We need, we need to clean this up. I would, I would propose, which I think works really well with this group, is a subcommittee to sit down with staff and look at all the notes that were taken and come back to the five of us before it goes to planning.
Ms. Schneider and Mr. Hollibur?
Okay, I'm not overly fond of subcommittees because I feel that that has too much power and it gets back to the full council as a done deal. In terms of how quickly to turn this around, staff, you've been given quite a few things to clean up on this, and some of it is auxiliary documents that can help support it. How quickly could that, and we can't approve it tonight. It's my understanding, this is just for information and to get more comments. But the next Planning Commission is the beginning of June. Is that too soon? So we're looking at the second Planning Commission meeting in June? Can we make that? Okay. I've been talking to some fiscal people who think that we can go to Airbnb and other platforms and collect past TOT. We haven't talked about that at all. Can that be discussed at that time?
I think Airbnb, as part of their standard voluntary collection agreements, they ask cities to waive past TOT.
They can ask anything they like. I'm not happy with that. So I would like to go back, I would like, when this comes back to us, to also look at collecting past TOTs. They've been running a business, they've been making a profit, they can look at paying past TOT. So we're looking at the second planning meeting in June? Can we, or in May, in June? Can we do that? We're going to be passing a budget in June. Can we look seriously at getting at least one full-time code enforcement officer for a range of code enforcement issues? We brought this up two years ago at the beginning of a two-year budget process. Wayne and I were the only two that wanted to see a full-time code person. We got voted down, but it's time to look at bringing at least one full-time code enforcement person. We're in the budget process. That could happen now, in the cycle. What else needs to be done? I want to see this moving now. I don't want to see this going to a subcommittee. I don't want to see this going to, you know, at least start getting a working draft. I don't want to see this going to, you know, at least start getting a working draft that you can nitpick apart instead of playing up here in the concept level.
Mr. Holliver?
No, I think we're in agreement on that. This is, it is a working draft now, and I think what, my understanding is staff was looking for direction from the council for what to change to the draft that has been proposed to us. And then that would go to the planning commission and then back to the council for final approval. So, a couple more opportunities for making final changes. I do agree with that on the code enforcement. I think we'll be discussing that in the budget hearing later this evening. And then also getting some type of a service onboard to identify all the properties. It sounds like staff's already been working on that.
Vice Mayor Lee?
You know, this is a complicated issue. I thank staff, I don't, for approaching this subject. It's not easy and it's new, so we're kind of trailblazing here. So, I think if we just keep, it just needs some, I think it needs some tweaking in my, you know, in some of the comments I made to try to ensure that everybody's playing by the rules and that everybody is doing their fair share. And I'm not just talking about Airbnb, I'm talking about all the platforms. And also, I'd just make sure we address, chief, address the other issue about bad elements coming into Millbrae and taking advantage of, you know, whatever they can to have wild parties, which we don't, we're trying to discourage and try to keep them out, right? So, they'll find a way. It doesn't have to be any sort of Airbnb or anything, but we need to address that other issue.
I have a question. People have already admitted they are operating now and they are operating in violation of at least the business license. So, would anybody like to give some advice to those watching who are currently, need to go get a business license as to how they can at least achieve that part of it?
Sure, I think that's the irony of the discussion tonight. A lot of the units and the addresses that were brought up this evening are currently operating illegally. So, it's not a matter of having an ordinance to regulate them. We just need to enforce the ordinance, and that's a code enforcement issue that, understanding...
Right now, it's an informational issue, so I would like that it be posted on the website as quickly as possible. How someone gets a business license if they are currently operating as such while we proceed.
As a host or as a platform?
If you are using your home as an Airbnb, our current regulation is required.
City manager raises a good point. I'm not sure our business license will issue to someone who's operating in illegal use. So, I think we need to double-check on that process. But we can work that out and we'll, I think it'd be helpful for the city to put a notice on the website to Airbnb hosts, just informing them of this process, and we'll give them the guidance on the business license.
Excuse me one second, but a long-term or short-term lease is profitable.
What do you mean profitable? I'm not talking about profitable here.
You said they're running a business. If you're renting your house out. So, I think that let's be cautious before we tell everybody to go get business licenses.
Right, no, we're going to check on that. Because I believe our office doesn't issue the business license until they've gotten a sign-off from all of the city departments, and you can't get one for operating a short-term rental because it's not legal in any place in the city.
Well, I don't appreciate the misinformation that I was given when this first came up then, because I was told you needed a business license. So, the misinformation is not appreciated now that it's been explained. So, let's get a notice.
I'm looking into this, I'm just getting my head wrapped around all this. Code enforcement is definitely an issue in this city. There is no question about it. And that's something that I will be addressing, both in terms of who we contract with and the lack of performance, and as mentioned tonight, in the budget, making it a priority. I don't think there's any disagreement. It's a management issue and a utilization issue that we will discuss, you know, within the departments and administration, but I hear you loud and clear. My point is that enforcement right now is that these uses are illegal. So, we can go out and we can enforce them and shut them down because legally, under our ordinance, they're not allowed. So, you know, that's an issue I think that necessitates the rapid process and approval of this ordinance so we can accommodate and get them legal and have enforcement. And so, I think the faster we can get it back to you, the better. And so, that's what we will, that's what we will do. We'll try to make the planning commission within the month of June and bring this back to the city council for adoption in July.
If it comes back to the city council, we would like it to be accompanied with a service or operator that's going to be tracking and assisting with the enforcement. I don't want to have to wait another month after that to just see some action here. Does staff have a clear guidance on how to proceed?
I do, yes. Yes, we do.
All right. It says action, though. I guess we're just giving you action, we don't take a formal vote. Okay, so, are we going to get something at the next meeting? We are going to get an update to the two residents, I hope.
I heard that direction.
If you want this to move as fast as possible, the next step would be to go to the planning commission. If you want to have more direction as to what is sent to the planning commission, then we would bring it back to you. I think we have enough, and I think the process of moving through the planning commission and back to council gives you opportunities to have input. I'll just note that, you know, a chunk of this is zoning, and so those are noticed hearings. So, there's a 10-day notice, you know, and you've got to publish that before the planning commission, and the same thing before the council, and you can't publish the notice until the planning commission's already met. So, you're looking a minimum of 30 days to, right, and then another 30 days for the ordinance to come into effect. So, we're talking 60, 75 days minimum to have it in effect. Does give staff time to get the service plan together, but that's just the reality.
Okay, so with no objections, we're asking that it proceed to the planning.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, Ms. Schneider?
Just a comment. In none of these reports have we included any comparison of what we're talking about tonight to what other cities have done. Sometimes, in my experience, that has helped both the public understand where our city might be in comparison to others. I'm bringing that up under the garbage contract, but maybe you could include some information about what the other cities, the lead cities and then the average cities and cities that look like us.
As we were drafting the ordinance, we did review a number of best practices from other cities. Our ordinance, the proposed ordinance is based most strongly on Napa and Redwood City. We thought those were local jurisdictions that had some similar issues. We can definitely provide more information as to what other cities are doing.
I'm guessing Napa's more similar because they're very concerned that their housing stock is being turned into vacation rental, because I have friends with vacation rental. So, I understand that. But I do think, and this is where I'll agree with the mayor, being right next to the airport and being next to the trains and someday with high-speed rail, it does make us unique in that. So, if we can maybe find another community that is similar in being next to an airport might help. And Oakland's not close enough. It's got to be a city that's smack dab next to the airport.
We can look into that.
Okay, moving on to item 10. Resolution approving a new maximum garbage rate schedule. Always fun. Ms. Rider, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. This evening, I'll provide a review of the...
You know what? Hold on a second.
Do you want me to wait? I'll wait.
And Mr. Holliver wanted a brief break. Okay, let's just take a couple minutes here. Back in five, please.
That's...
Welcome.
I don't mind being... You might be trying to be easy. I'm just trying to work this. So, if you...
It's hard to... I don't know. It's...
That's... Welcome.
I don't mind being... You might be trying to be easy. I'm just trying to work this. So, if you...
It's hard to... I don't know. It's...
It's hard to... I don't know. It's...
Welcome.
I don't mind being... You might be trying to be easy. I'm just trying to work this. So, if you...
It's hard to...
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 Welcome back to the Millbrae City Council. Ms. Ryder, we are on item number 10.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. This evening, I'll provide a review of the proposed garbage rate schedule. I'll first provide some background information. In 2009, the City Council at that time approved a new franchise agreement with the South San Francisco Scavenger Company for an eight-year term. That agreement was set to expire on November 1st of 2017, and a new agreement was approved in June of 2017. The franchise agreement requires that rates are reviewed and adjusted accordingly each year, with the new rates becoming effective on July 1 of each year. The franchise agreement calls for a three-year rate-setting cycle. For the first two years, the maximum allowable garbage rates are based on any changes to the Consumer Price Index, the CPI. Every third year, any potential changes to the garbage rates are based on a rate survey of a pre-selected group of cities. Last year's rates were adjusted according to the CPI and were adjusted at 2.62% for all service categories. This fiscal year represents the third year in the rate-setting cycle, according to the franchise agreement. The Scavenger Company conducted a rate survey of a pre-selected group of cities, according to the franchise agreement, based on specified levels of services. Staff verified the submitted survey, verified it, and worked with the Scavenger Company to make adjustments for discrepancies. This year's survey resulted in increases to the residential and commercial garbage rates in the range of 2.92% to 5.69%. And I'll give some examples of these rates. The majority of residents use a 32-gallon garbage cart. The result of the survey was a $1.88 increase, which is a 5.69% increase, for a total cost of $34.93 per month. And that includes all services, all recycling, organics, twice-a-year on-call, bulky pickup. And that's the residential rate. For the commercial 32-gallon cart, the survey resulted in a 94-cent increase, which is a 2.92% increase to the existing rates, for a total cost of $33.18 per month. For the commercial two-cubic-yard container, the survey resulted in a $12.62% increase to the existing rate, for a 4.14% increase at a cost of $317.22 per month. The 14-yard temporary debris box resulted in an increase of $21.94 for a 3.49% increase to the existing rate, and total cost of $650.81 for a seven-day period. Last, for the compactor rate, the increase was $3.05 to the existing rate, which is a total of 4.88% increase, and total cost of $65.57 per compacted yard. Approval of the proposed garbage rates will increase the franchise fees for the General Fund, as well as the Integrated Waste Management Enterprise Fund, as included in the staff report. Upon approval of the proposed rates, the South San Francisco Scavenger Company will put a notice in the customer bills for the June billing notifying them of a rate increase. It's staff recommendation to adopt a resolution approving a new maximum garbage rate schedule, which would become effective on July 1 of 2018, in full accordance with the franchise agreement with the South San Francisco Scavenger Company. I'm happy to answer any questions. And we also have Doug Button, President of the South San Francisco Scavenger Company, and Paul Formosa, the Chief Financial Officer, who can also answer any questions.
Very nice report. Thank you, Ms. Ryder. Nice to see you. Questions from the council? Ms. Schneider?
Okay. South City Scavenger, you know I love you. You know I'm very, very happy that we have dual stream. And for my fellow council members, China has been blocking more and more commodities. And now nationally, all of the cities that went to single-stream are being, which means you throw your recyclables, all of them, into one container, single-stream. They're being told, maybe it's time you should go to dual-stream. So, we are very, very fortunate to be in a dual-stream situation. Okay, that's my good news. And I love the food scrap recycling. Here's the bad news. A year ago, when we were talking about extending your contract an additional eight years, there were some things that were identified, and that this council agreed that Joan Casman and I would continue to work with you all to get them done. One of those was making sure that the black yard waste carts are no longer black, that they're green, as our public education materials claim they should be, and that all of the containers have the appropriate signage on them, so customers know what they should and shouldn't put in them. It's kind of the basic, baseline education on that. Some of that has happened. I talked to your staff. We had dinner at the Progress Seminar, and we talked about this. And I know your staff want to do this, but it hasn't happened yet. And now you're coming back for a rate increase. Now, I'm sure the rate increase is due to fuel, and labor, and other costs, but our staff reports don't really go into that type of detail that I'd like to see. But I'm only one council member. But I really would like to see that yard waste, with the related food scraps, are available in appropriate containers with appropriate signage, at not just single-family dwellings, but multifamily dwellings, at any apartment or condominium complex, and at all of our businesses. And that there's push for education to get those businesses participating, because I will tell you, I can walk the alleys, some are, and most aren't. So, we've got this great program, and we're not using rate-setting to get our contractor to do as much as they can. And I want to keep you, and I want to keep our customers happy. And you're asking for a pretty significant rate increase, especially on residential customers. What are they getting for it? And why haven't we gotten the things that we talked about a year ago?
I can say that residents are getting a full range of the typical services, and the garbage, recycling, organics. When the company had switched to, or had expanded to add yard trimmings, what happened is households were using the large 96-gallon black carts. This is many years ago. And in an effort to reuse them and not create another disposal problem, those became the yard containers, and the standard became a 32-gallon cart for residents. So, it was a reuse of those containers. And as customers need new containers for yard trimmings, anyone can get that green cart, and anyone can get that decal. And as a follow-up from last year, we did do outreach, Scavenger did do outreach to let people know they could get the decal to put on their containers. We have a public service announcement on MCTV. The Scavenger Company has included articles within their newsletter, and a way to keep costs down was to keep using those containers. And I know in the outreach I do, I don't specify necessarily that it's always a green cart, because I know some of them are black, and they are being reused. And so, those decals are available for everyone.
I'm confused, Ms. Schneider, what the difference makes. I mean, I know mine's black, and I know what goes in there.
When you're, part of the, what confuses the public most often, especially in multi-use areas, where they move around more frequently, is the color of containers makes a difference in knowing where to put things. So, believe it or not, the colors are important. That's why the colors, over time, have become pretty standardized.
Okay, but I would suggest...
At the same time, we agreed a year ago that we would be moving forward, and this is the first time I haven't gotten any information about that happening. Now, if we're talking about apartments on our next door, one of the communities that can be very verbal, they have talked about not having access to food scrap recycling. Now, my question is, is that because the apartment manager uses a landscape company, then therefore they have no green waste at all? Or is it because they don't have the right container? Any way you look at it, those customers, those residents, don't have access to a really terrific program.
Yes, so, any multifamily dwelling condominium can have organic service. It really is up to the manager and the owners of these facilities. And so, in some cases...
Actually, I'm sorry. The law states five units or more must have certain services.
They must have yard trimming service for the five yards. That's AB 1826, yes. And so, most of the multifamily dwellings, when AB 1826 came about, we did survey, worked closely with Scavenger, identified all of the multifamily dwellings, which ones needed service. And in the landscaping, most of them are off-hauled, and that's the situation. Everyone is eligible to have the service, though, and for associated cost.
I've had people write to me saying that they try, and they can't. And they are actually bringing their food scraps to local, single-family dwelling homes. That's not right. That's not what we're paying for.
It would be up to the building manager and the owner to provide that service. And if enough tenants request it, and the manager or owner is willing, South San Francisco Scavenger is more than willing. We've done a lot of outreach with the, based on the various legislation, to get all of the apartments and condominiums recycling. There are some that have organics, and it is limited compared to the recycling. The recycling is very challenged in a mixed unit, and I know you're aware of that. There's a lot of contamination, there's a lot of issues. We can't force people, but we can encourage, and we can do our part in the outreach. And we've done a lot of that over the years, and working together to make sure that we're following the state legislation that requires it. But it does take the owner for food scraps. That's not a part of the legislation.
So, would we need a local ordinance to say, all of our residential properties should have access?
We would have to do, if that were the case, to make it, to ensure that every apartment, building, or condominium, the state only requires yard trimmings for five units and more.
The reason I bring this up, if we had a climate action plan that had specific targets, one of the easiest ways of reducing the impact of methane is to have food scrap programs, and then get them to the anaerobic digester and turn them into fuel. It's one of the easiest things that we can do. We simply have to have the will to do it. And since it's been up on next door, and since there are residents who want this service, I'd like us to be more aggressive in getting those services to them. We all know that property managers are going to be recalcitrant.
Well, I'm happy to work with them, and also the South San Francisco Scavenger. We're happy to work with anyone to get those services. We want them to have those services.
Okay, great. Next question. How many of the 32-gallon customers are going to go to a 20-gallon customer with a new rate? It's a $5, it's, well, 5%, $2 increase?
I'm not sure what that expectation is, or, you know, I don't have an estimation. There may be some that will migrate smaller, and they would have to, you know, likely increase their recycling and organic collection as well. What's that? I'm sorry.
I'm being facetious. I said darn.
Oh. But hopefully, you know, that is our goal, and it's a goal of South San Francisco Scavenger, to divert as much waste as a landfill, and, you know...
What would have been nice in the staff report, if it said, one way that the public can reduce the cost of their garbage bills is by recycling more, and doing compost more. And our staff report didn't talk about that. It didn't say, this is how you get out of this increase, unless you're already at the 20-gallon rate, because we don't do a mini-can.
When I mentioned earlier how we had switched from, the 96-gallon was the standard, and so the majority, I mean, I don't know, it's, you know, 80% or whatever, are at that 32-gallon. That's when we had the hugest migration, and made a big difference in diverting waste from landfill.
My last question is, why isn't Brisbane's rate included on the rate comparisons, when Brisbane and South City and we have exact, I assume, the exact same program?
We do have the exact program, and they, they're in the same rate-setting type of period, and I'm not sure if that was the reason they're not included. There are 32 cities included, South San Francisco's included, and their rates actually will be adjusted by July 1 as well. And I'm not sure the exact reason why Brisbane isn't included, or if they need to be included. That's something that could be looked at.
So, the South San Francisco rate, which is currently $31.00 and change, would be more in line with what will be at $34.00? And I, my computer, I have to look...
I don't know exactly what that rate will be for South San Francisco. It will likely be up, you know, within a similar range, I would imagine. They have some different variables in franchise fees and that, but their rate will be adjusted July 1, just like ours.
Okay, good. It would be good for future reports like this, to talk about when these various cities are doing their rate adjustments. Otherwise, it's really hard for me to pick out who, why is Palo Alto at 60-plus dollars? I'm going to call people in Palo Alto to find out why they're so high on that one. But it was hard for me to compare apples and apples on that.
Other questions? Yes, Ms. Vice Mayor Lee.
Thank you for your report. Can you also address Councilwoman's supposition, why we're not doing a cost-based analysis versus this type of contract?
That was a decision that was made years ago and implemented. It was adopted by the City Council at that time, in 2004. The new market basket survey approach, as it's called, was implemented in 2005. It was done because, my understanding is that it's very expensive on the part of the city, on the part of the Scavenger Company, involving attorneys on both sides. It's a lengthy process, and it was decided to make the process more simple and to keep the rates down. And in comparison to the cost plus, the rates have increased less than they did under that approach.
Thank you. And also, I just wondered...
Was that a shout-out to Mr. Sandrini in Wyoming?
I just, well, it was a question. And I just, I just wanted to make one comment. I think that our rates could go down, too, if we had more of a commercial base to offset a lot of our costs, because that's, a lot of cities have that opportunity, and we don't...
Interesting thought.
Actually, the...
Wait a minute, Ms. Schneider, if you would, please. That's an interesting thought, and I see the Scavengers' representatives in the audience shaking their heads to a yes. So, should we...
It actually even says that right in the contract, so...
Very good. Thank you. Now, Ms. Schneider?
Then I'm going to be corrected. The trend nationally has been to stop commercial from subsidizing residential. We still have it in our contract that commercial is subsidizing residential rates?
No, no. There's just a comment that the reason the city's rates are the way they are, is that the city does not have a substantial commercial base, I guess, to subsidize. So, I'm not sure you can conclude that that means...
Again, the trend has been to remove those, because the message to residents and businesses are, you will pay for garbage, you will be rewarded for recycling. When you have one subsidizing the other, the message to residents isn't as clear. So, to get the public to participate, the, those costs were separated. It would be really unusual to me to find that we're going to start having commercial subsidized. Now, if you're talking about volume, that it gets cheaper to run a full truck than to run a half-full truck, that's a different argument. If that's what you mean by having more commercial, having fuller trucks going back to the landfill...
I'm not advocating anything. Alls I'm saying is, I think the status quo is that there's low commercial rates, so there's really no prospect of subsidization. So, it's really not...
I just, not to correct Mr. Lee, but yeah, it's a different mechanism.
If it happens, right.
Mr. Hollibur?
I have a question. If our rates are based off of the survey results, then how would that change if our commercial residential balance changes?
Might not. I think you'd have to, might only occur if you renegotiated the agreement. I think it was just a statement of the facts at the time that the agreement was put into place.
Okay. Yeah, I think maybe that's something, I mean, it seems like now it can't be renegotiated for seven more years.
Six more. I mean, again, I think Councilmember Lee stated it correctly. I mean, there was a...
More of a long-term trend.
We, for years, went through very difficult, very expensive, lots of consultants, and this is a, an agreed-upon method. It's not perfect, and certainly, you know, there are some in the community who feel very strongly that we should go through such a, I think. But the decision was made not to, that, you know, we, and so we agreed on a, you know, this process of CPI, CPI, and then do a survey.
Okay.
So, that is it. I think we have six years to go. And if, you know, we can certainly monitor it and see if there's, at some point, we want to make a change.
No, I agree. And I think we have heard that going through that whole process of cost base, or if we were to do RFP or something like that, is very costly, and in the end, probably does not justify whatever marginal difference there would be in the rates. I'd like to just request our friends from the Scavengers, next time, and I assume this was in the contract, but maybe next time we do the survey, could we knock Piedmont out? They seem to be bringing up the averages quite a bit.
We, actually, there's an exhibit that lists the cities that are in the plan.
I understand.
Yeah, okay. But, point noted, okay.
They could throw us a bone, maybe, next time. We, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ryder, my compliments as well. You've done a fabulous job, and I know every other city would love to have your services as far as encouraging our community to recycle. And Ms. Schneider, if you have some sort of an ordinance you would like to propose, because that would be done at our level, and, or sample one that we could give staff, we could add that, address that at a next goal-setting session or something like that. But, well, takes time. If you wish to do that, right now, all we can do is do what we are, the community outreach that Ms. Ryder is so good at doing. We appreciate that. So, with that said, do we have a motion? We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lee, seconded by Ms. Oliva. Your votes, please. Item number 10, on the garbage rates, passed unanimously. Thank you for your report, Ms. Ryder.
Thank you, Staley.
The exciting stuff. Item 11, first budget review of a two-year operating and capital budget for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, and 2019, 20...
Two years.
Yeah, two years, 20. I'm here. I will pass.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Oliva.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Glad to be presenting to you this evening on our two-year, and this is a preliminary review of where we're at on the two-year budget, while we bring in a final budget book to you at our next council meeting. But just wanted to give you a high level of what we've been working with as we get started. So, we'll give you a little bit of an overview. Our focus tonight is on the General Fund operating budget. We can talk a little bit about the other funds. There are a few funds that are subsidized by the General Fund, so those impact the General Fund operating budget. And we'll also talk a little bit about the five-year capital plan, and some changes in how that's presented. So, I want to start a little bit with some background definitions and some guiding principles. So, the operating budget is basically your budget to do the day-to-day programs and activities that will continue on. So, absent us, reducing programs, reducing services, but they're not these one-time projects that typically have been categorized as capital projects, but in reality, capital has a specific accounting definition, so we redefine them as special projects, if they're not, from an accounting perspective, capital. So, our capital and special projects budget are those one-time projects that we expect to conclude. There may be capital items that keep happening over and over again, and that would be things like street projects, that you do one street project, and a couple of years later, you do another streets project. But there are other projects, for example, our finance system replacement, that should be completed, and then just be a maintenance item in our operating budget. Our goal is to present to you a balanced budget from the operations. So, in a balanced budget, the operating revenues either meet or exceed the operating expenses. An operating deficit is when that does not happen, so your operating expenses are greater than your operating revenues. In the past three years that I've looked at, we typically budget an operating deficit. But because we've not filled positions, we've ended up at the end of the year with a surplus of funds. Over the last year, we've really focused on filling positions and executing projects, and so I don't think we can rely on that savings, and we really need to bring our budget structurally into balance, and we've spent a lot of time on that, and we'll talk more about that. Again, we're going to focus on the General Fund, but we do have enterprise funds, we have special revenue... have special revenue funds, we have some internal service funds. We could talk a little bit more about each of those, and again, how those impact the general fund. So, for, for our process, we're in the second year of our financial system, our first year using the budget module of that system. And so, like I did last year, we did a little bit of a hands-on process and worked really collaboratively, collaboratively with all of our department teams. It wasn't even necessarily with the department heads, many managers came and met with me to explain to me the programs they're working on. We looked at what they were actually spending funds on. So, if there was a, a large budget that was unexpended, then we considered, you know, did they really need a budget of that size? So, we could really work to trim those expenses. There may be situations where something was budgeted more than once, just in two different categories, that type of thing. We really took advantage of the financial system, which all the departments have access to, they can look at their own reports at any moment they want. We don't, they don't have to wait for finances, send them a monthly report. They can drill down a cost all the way to the point of seeing the invoice that was put into their, into their account. So, we, we looked at that, you know, where they're really at, what do they, what do they really need? Maybe what projects they just haven't quite done this year that they're rolling forward? What do they need to do that's still really in operations versus a special project? And probably 10 or 15 of those meetings, you know, just the variety of divisions and departments that we work with. Then, in the finance team, we look at our other funds. So, for example, there's debt service, the general fund needs to pay and transfer to a debt service fund. There are internal service funds, such as our general liability fund, our garage fund, our vehicle replacement fund. We distribute costs amongst all of the departments for those items and identify those transfers. And again, some of that relieves pressure from the general fund, so that the fund that is benefiting from the cost is paying the cost. And where we can find restricted funds to pay for costs, we will use them to make the general fund available for the things that can't be used on other items or tasks. So, from an overview of the general fund, our, our top revenue source is property tax. Thirty-nine percent of our revenue is in property tax. Twenty-eight percent is in transient occupancy tax. We've talked a little bit about that tonight. Sales and use tax, about $3 million, 11%. And followed by a number of smaller revenue items. The other category is quite a few small things, use of money and property, is rents and insurance, intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenues, such as grants or transfers received from the state. Transfers, so some funds transfer into the general fund to pay costs of administration, for example, human resources and finance services that are provided citywide. And business license taxes, actually such a small percentage that it's categories, categorizes On the expense side, our largest expense is public safety costs. And what we've included here is both the contract costs for our police and fire services, as well as the ongoing costs that the city has to pay for post-employment benefits for both active members, so maybe employees that transferred to our contract agencies, or for employees that retired from the city while the city was still providing those services directly. So, that's a pretty significant component of our cost structure. About 24% of our cost is in salaries and benefits for non-public safety, 15% in services and supplies, and the general fund subsidizes other funds, that's operating transfers to the tune of about $2 million. So, looking at the last few years, we...
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
The other, the operating transfers, does also include the rainy day fund?
The rainy day fund is, is actually a part of the general fund fund balance or reserves, so it is not accounted for at all in the operating budget, it is just set aside. And so, the operating transfers currently is recreation, storm drain, and a debt service So, looking back over the last few years, again, we've, we've started with an operating deficit in each of the last three years of about $2 million. For this year, we are right now, at this moment, looking at still a $1.6 million deficit that we're working to close. And we'll, as we go forward, we'll look at the options that staff is looking at to help to close that. And in 2020, we're looking at an ongoing deficit as well. For now, we're focused on 2019, and then we'll be looking at some revenue options that we can maybe implement in 2019 for 2020. So, the primary causes of the increases in our budget is increase in retirement costs. You all have heard a lot about that, and I do still owe you a PERS presentation. So, part of retirement costs is what's called UAL, or unfunded actuarial liability. So, each year, PERS calculates based on all the active employee's current salary, what they expect their salary might be when they retire, how long they expect them to live, a number of factors, and identifies this UAL cost. This is separate from what they call the normal cost, which is about 14% of employee salaries, of which employees pay 5%, plus another 8% that employees pay. So, this, this UAL is a fixed-dollar figure that the city pays to CalPERS on an annual basis. The bulk of it for the general fund is, again, in public safety, about $725,000. The miscellaneous component, $250,000, that's the general fund portion, and the rest of it is distributed through other funds that have employees. So, the total cost of UAL for all funds is about $4.4 million this year. And we've also had an increase in our public safety costs this year. So, for police services, the increase was about $150,000, and for fire service, the increase was about $520,000. For fire, they absolutely were significantly impacted by UAL cost increases, and that same occurred with the city's fire UAL for employees that are no longer with the city.
Do you have a percentage?
For, for police, the percentage is 3%, for fire, it is 7%. So, again, our first review, where we met with all the departments and teams and asked them, you know, in an ideal world, what do you need? We had about, we had a deficit of about $3 million. So, we've, we've really carved that down, we've really worked, you know, dug in and said, well, maybe your code, you maybe got this budgeted twice, what's going on here? Do you need to do that? Can you do a little bit less? And we've gotten that down, like I said, to about 1.6 million. So, we're going to be working over the next few days on the remaining $2 million or so dollars. And we just wanted to share with you some of the options we're looking at. So, we're going to be looking at transferring the costs of staff that are associated with capital projects, so that's primarily your engineering staff, so that they are charged to the capital projects versus just to the general fund. And again, in the general fund, it's only the staff performing projects associated with the general fund, such as streets projects, parks projects, facilities projects. If they're, they're performing services related to sewer or, or water, those are charged to those funds. We're looking at unfunding some vacant positions. That does not include code enforcement. The proposal that we are giving you includes a full-time code enforcement officer. And we're not looking at taking that out in this process. We're going to continue to look at some of the savings that are possible in departments with vacant positions. So, it may be that we've, again, we've gotten some, some positions contract, are put in salary as well as we're contracting, and maybe we've got some double opportunities for savings We, as a, as a resort, not an ideal resort, because it's effectively a transfer from reserves, we're looking at using our OPEB trust funds. So, we have OPEB trust funds of about $6.5 million that we've set aside to pay post-employment medical benefits. Those are general funds that have been set, set aside. This is the purpose of those funds, and so if needed to balance our budget, we can draw on those funds and, and pay those benefits. And a next area is to reduce our operating transfers to a couple of funds. One is the storm drain fund. That fund currently has some fund balance available, so that would get us through this year from the operating side. We'll still have to make some capital transfers. And the other is recreation programs. So, we're looking at, while we're, while we're pending a master fee study, we'll be looking at doing a, a more abbreviated recreation fee increase to increase some revenues in that area. We'll also be looking at more of a comprehensive review of recreation programs to see if maybe there are some that are, that are maybe more costly than, than are reasonable for the city to subsidize and consider whether we want to continue them. So, again, the next steps in the general fund is we're going to be putting these proposed options in place. We'll report back to you on June 12 with a budget book and a balanced budget. We'll be looking at an interim fee schedule update, again, focused on recreation with a master fee study. We'll be talking about that later as well, with the master fee study update, RFP, to go out soon after. And then throughout the next fiscal year, we'll be working on a number of activities to continue to redo, to address the structural imbalance that we're facing. So, are there any questions I can answer on the operating budget, or I can move on to the capital budget? Yes?
More to the comment, can you next add consideration of the projection cost that we, from the specific plan for the TOD 1 and 2, in the five, in the five-year plan, so we get an idea of, you know, what we can expect in revenue?
So, as it stands today, those projects pay a direct cost recovery. So, we directly, for example, the contract services, we directly just charge in the services we've contracted. If an employee works on the, on a project, we directly recover those employee costs. We will significantly improve that recovery with a master fee study, and that is, that is planned for, for next year. But right now, it's just a cost recovery model.
Well, actually, what I meant was, there's some expected revenues from TOD, TOT and other... Yeah. I know the projects won't come online for at least a couple of years, but...
You're referring to the building permit revenue, is, is that right?
No, I'm talking about expected sales tax revenues, property tax revenues, and expenses that goes with that too, we went both sides. But I know you can't really project that right now, but, you know, if we can get a five-year plan or 10-year plans, that we can kind of figure out where we can, you know, what are we looking at in terms of long-term planning for the city?
Yes, so you'll see at the end of this presentation, that is, one of our next steps, besides the master fee study, is a, is a 10-year financial plan. It's going to base off of this fiscal year's budget, this 2019 budget, when we're done, because we have the most confidence in the numbers. And so, that's the entry point to getting that done. Our consultant expects to move pretty quickly, once they have this data that we're, that we're wrapping up here. And they can take in the economic studies that were done for the, the two TODs, and, and we could do kind of two scenarios or three scenarios in terms of timing when they come live. So, that, that can be included and has been addressed in our contract with that consultant.
And I would hope we've been notified about some transportation money that we, CCG will be issuing very quickly. I hope we will be in line for some of that, those applications. Ms. Schneider?
Couple of questions. Yes? The increases in fire, have we planned a fire subcommittee? Are they coming back to us for any formal authorization for that? We haven't had a fire subcommittee meeting in over a year.
We can certainly schedule one. I'm, I'm sure the chief would be happy to present. The, the interpretation or the reading of the contract was just to present through city manager as part of budget process, and we had a transition at the time. So, certainly, if that's the desire, we can, we can get that scheduled right away.
Okay. It just, I think the previous two years, we've at least had a meeting with the fire subcommittee to talk about why the increases are and, and how they are in terms of what we promised the public by going into Central County Fire.
Yeah, and I'm sure they'll be happy to have that. I apologize, that was probably my lapse as we, as we had some transition here.
And the two position, or the unfunded vacant positions, which positions are those?
The current unfunded vacant positions is a position in human resources and a deputy director of public works position.
And has there been any savings, or has it cost more by reducing the use of consultants?
In the public works department, I think they've just really reorganized and been able to operate pretty efficiently. He can speak to that a little bit, and from my perspective, in terms of us changing purchasing process, they've done a fantastic job. So, I'm gonna give him props for that. For, for HR, we, we did some rearrangement of assignments. So, for example, recreation was moved out of that area, and so that, that left, that freed up some staff.
Where is rec...
With finance.
Oh, okay, so it already happened.
They're bringing the fund to finance.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hollibur.
Very minor in terms of the overall scope here, but is there some type of, something currently in the budget for the various committees and commissions? I know in past years, they've had some very minor, you know, discretionary budget, a few thousand dollars that they could spend on special projects, and I believe one of our goals was to empower the commissions and committees, and I think it's hard to do that without having some type of a minimal budget.
So, as a part of the goal-setting process, we are instructed to bring forth those plans. We, we probably, through some, some funds identified in the city manager's office that can then be transferred as needed, will identify the funding needed. So, as they bring forward their work plans, their new work plans, so through the summer staff, probably the department heads will be meeting with those respective committees, identifying what those specific work plans are. And I took a look at one, and I agree, it didn't have some, some tangible outcome, so that was our, that was our commitment to you as council, and then with that, we'll be identifying the budget to get it done.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think also, just, not just the budget issue, but to be sure they've got the staff. So, when something comes up that's not in work plan, you know, we're saying, well, we've got a work plan to work with. So, having a work plan, they can, you know, now a grant comes up, we can say, okay, well, that's in the work plan, get on the grant, that type of thing.
Thank you. Please continue.
Anything else? Okay. Moving on to the capital budget, Deputy City Manager Lynn will make most of this presentation, but I will start with just some background on what's different. So, looking at what you've done for the past years in the capital budget, there was a five-year plan, but it didn't really articulate what you had money for. So, when I looked at it today, the budget that was adopted in 2016, you had about a $90 million capital budget adopted, but you didn't have that much money to implement that budget. So, so we looked, we, we started from 2018. We did what I call a zero-based budget. What that means is I don't assume that because you, because it was approved in 2014, or 15, or 16, or 17, we're not assuming that that money's still sitting out there. It's very difficult from a financial planning perspective to do that, and it's, it's, you know, you're working from memory. So, if you were able to look at the larger capital document we presented to you, we listed what was there in 18, but we're also making some recommendations around deferring projects and what's really funded and not funded. In an ideal world, there is some surplus at the end of the year, and, and those can be allocated either to, for example, to reduce our liabilities, our pension liabilities that we talked about, or to build capital. Some of the reason we have that level of funding is just, we have not executed. So, as we start executing, those funds will go away. That is the right thing to do. We're not a, we're not a bank for the city, for the residence funds. We need to execute and get projects done, but those funds won't be sitting there for there to be such a large project base. So, we're gonna, we looked at the general fund reserves, the fund balance, where it is now. We use the 25% number of, we don't have a formal reserve policy, we'll be working on that, but we use 25% of those funds to determine what's left over.
I disagree. I signed a formal reserve policy.
Okay.
There is one on the books.
I will see if I can find it then.
I'm sure you'll find it.
Okay. I'm challenged. So, again, we've, we've built you a capital budget that indicates where funding is available. And then our basis for our recommendation starts with your goals, your strategic goals, identified on May 5. We'll make sure those projects are previously funded. We wanted to complete initiatives that have already been started. We wanted to consider the health and safety of the city and its constituent constituents. We wanted to consider federal and state mandates and long-term sustainability of the city. So, when we're looking at our recommendation, and, and we welcome your thoughts or comments as we go through it, those are the, those are the key areas that we're looking at. So, starting with the kind of special project side, and I think one more item to add is, this is something we will also continue to refine over the next two weeks, we may bring back some different recommendations as, as we've looked at, at staffing and alignment, so we will, we will be revisiting this again. So, we're, we're completing a document management program, including records retention software that will make it easier to find some of these things, like you just mentioned. In finance and information technology, we'll be looking at a master fee study. That study is intended to include development impact fees, cost allocation plan... That study is intended to include development impact fees, cost allocation plan, which is how other non-general fund departments pay for general fund service, again, such as finance, human resources administration, and a revenue study, which would be somebody coming to you and saying, here's all your options to bring in more money to the city. All kinds of levels of how easy or hard they are to do, but that's, that's what we're looking at. We are completing our finance, working to complete our finance system upgrade. That may have another year after this one. And then ongoing information technology upgrades, including a phone system replacement and extension of the wifi, public wifi project. In community development, from your council goals, we are working on a business improvement district. We're also looking at our housing element implementation. You recently approved contract for the multimodal compensationary access plan. Most of that will be encumbered this year, meaning the funds are held, but we are preserving some funds into next year. We are completing our active transportation and this is an area that we're looking at. We may be, we may be solid there. Looking at updating the zoning code, which follows the general plan. That may be deferred as the general plan is delayed. And we also have a commitment to the affordable housing project of $2.8 million and that will have to be held from the general fund and committed. So there's a few projects in community development that we're recommending...
Excuse me, that's a typo. My colleagues gave away 2.88 million. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Holliver. Yes, Ms. Schneider?
Yes, please.
The housing element implementation, what is that? I know the housing element, but what are we implementing for 100,000, 150,000?
That is something we'll be looking at a little, and we, I mentioned that earlier, we'll be looking at some of these a little more deeply. We do now have a project manager, she's for housing and economic development. She's been on the ground for about six weeks or so and it may be something that can be handled in-house, in which case those funds aren't needed. So as we work through budget, earlier this year, the director identified funding was needed, but we may find that we're able to do that in-house. But I believe it was to get some consulting work to make sure we're meeting the guidelines of our housing element of our general plan. Tom, do you have any better answers?
It may also include a, an affordable housing fee.
You mean an in-loo fee?
Well, an in-loo fee or a, or a commercial, trigger, a commercial...
Okay, so the creation of the documents and the ordinance to be able to do that?
Correct, for development of the program, right. Plus we have, we have reporting obligations on the housing element.
Commercial linkage?
Linkage fee, right?
Okay.
Commercial linkage, yeah. And we also have reporting obligations on the housing element now to the state, so...
I just thought maybe we were building housing, so when I hear implementation.
Please continue.
So on that note of our project manager for economic development and housing, we've suggested that we defer the, some of these economic development projects we've had in place. Lisa will be developing a plan and then we can revisit those at this time. So that's your downtown improvements, economic development implementation, which again may be able to be brought into staff and, and operating costs, and SFO projects. And some of these weren't very clearly defined for us and that was part of the reason we felt better to get it assigned, get it staffed and then bring something more, more concrete back to you.
What is not clearly defined to me is this SFO project? What is that?
Honestly, it was in your capital plan for 2018 and we have not identified what that really meant. I think it said SFO tourism or tourism SFO. Key might know.
There used to be money to put signage up in there.
Go ahead.
I, I believe the money was set aside for us to work with the tourism committee when we had one and to work with all the airport adjacent hotels on advertising banners and hotel signs and what have you.
Well, we have banners already and what about the construction that's going on within the city of Millbrae on the SF property? Do we need some permits from them and should we be getting some funding?
Are you referring to Site 7 construction?
Yes.
That is correct. We are going to be working with the airport on the permit issue about installing a tall fence and that hasn't happened yet and I will follow up with the airport.
I, I believe it's more than the fence. I think you should be looking at some hauling fees and some other things too, which would be greatly appreciated.
We definitely will follow up on that.
Thank you. Ms. Schneider?
So it's never been quite clear to me, the two parks, Marina Vista's Park and Bayside Manor's Park, as well as Bayfront Park, but those two parks in the neighborhoods, SFO maintains them or we maintain them and SFO owns them? Either way you look at it, the residents in those areas complain about the quality of what those parks look like, but I've been waiting for the park's master plan.
I understand that. I can answer to that. Marina Vista and Bayside Manor Parks are actually leased by City of Millbrae to San Francisco, city and county of San Francisco with a $1 lease a year. Bayfront Park is no longer under our maintenance and we are still maintaining Bayfront Parks and Bayside Manor Parks and both, we are aware that it needs attention and it also needs some money. So that's why we are here tonight talking about capital program and how we're going to prioritize limited resources that we have.
You can't renegotiate that $1 fee?
I think they'll probably waive that for us.
Thank you.
So I, I hope kind of the message regarding some of these things that are unclear is that's, that's why we're doing what we're doing. We're revisiting from zero and saying, you know, what are we really accomplishing here? And we think we've identified even up to today that we still have some work to do there, but we want to make the best use of the funds we have available. So now that Key sat down, he'll come back up and finish up talking about public works.
I know we have been in meetings since 6 o'clock tonight, so I will make this as painless as possible and as quick as I can make it.
Why don't you introduce yourself?
I am Keelim, Deputy City Manager, Public Works Director. Good evening, Mayor Patton, Vice Mayor Lee and members of the city council.
And Deanna before you, you do a proper introduction.
Then I should introduce the other deputy director, Deanna Hugh Brandt. So tonight I will be talking about public works, like capital and special project. So first, a couple of projects that we had on the capital plan last, last fiscal year, which is still in the current fiscal year, that we are going to be referring. And the first one would be the City Hall message board site and we all agree at the May 5th goal-setting council retreat that we will lower the priority on this project. And also in order to try to come up with the $3 million savings in general fund, we are going to slow down on the ADA transition plan and that is not going to get us into any type of legal problem because we already have an ADA transition plan. We know what we need to do, we just haven't identified sufficient funding to address those. And I'm going to just go to public works departments by department. First, we are going to be looking at facilities and facility means our city owns buildings. First off, we have a city hall campus here, including fire department and police and library, that we need to put some money into maintaining it. For example, we have a couple landscaping, small landscaping project that we will need to complete. First would be the ADA project that we completed on the exterior sites of City Hall and we have some landscaping that will be following up in the summer. And one of the project we are proposing for fiscal year 2019 is facility master plan and that is one project that if we cannot afford to do it in 2019, we can defer it to 2020 or later. And what I mean by facility master plan, which is a master plan to look at our city owns facilities and look at what is a life cycle, cycle of these buildings and what kind of maintenance efforts that we have to put into this building in order to prolong its useful life and also the type of maintenance, our ongoing maintenance that we need. And the next project is the fire station project and that is going to be a generator at fire station number 38 on Crestview that we have to replace because we are no longer meeting at district's requirements on that. And we're also coming to an end of the useful life of the generator because of the emission from the generator. And we're also looking at re-roofing the...
I'm sorry.
Any, any question, Mayor Patton?
Yeah.
Do you want to...
Well, part of the fire assessment was an assurance that we would keep that station open.
Correct.
So what are we, what's the bottom line there?
The bottom line is that we have some time to replace the generator so that we will continue to keep the station operational and we are addressing that. We are currently in a design stage to replace the existing generator and the implementation will be sometime in 2019.
Fire stations have to have emergency generator and emergency generator is no longer in compliance with air, air emission standards, so they have to replace it.
Do you have any connections with the... Just kidding. Go ahead.
All right. Also, we are looking at some re-roofing at some of the city buildings. For example, our police building, it's just about time that we need to look at replacing or repair the roofs.
Key?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So when we add, are we going to have to plan to add a ladder unit to one of the stations? Because if we're going to build that 11-story building, we're going to have to store that truck somewhere close by, right? Is there, what's the plans for that truck?
I do not have an answer right now, but I'm definitely can work with the city manager and get an answer back to you. I think also because now that we are part of Central County, we have another close-by station in Rollins Road in Burlingame that can respond to, to the incident at the TOD sites.
Yeah, that's pretty far away.
That is correct.
Ms. Schneider?
The ladder truck's already been purchased and is at Station 34 on California.
Okay.
But it is something, and we're going to have to keep, keep pushing to keep 38 because they still would like to close 38 and create a new station in Hillsborough.
Okay, let's, come on, right here. Back off focus, let's go.
All right, so moving on, now we are done with facility, we're going into parks. And one of the big items, I know that I've been standing at this podium addressing the council, which is the El Camino Real median landscaping. Unfortunately, with the drought, the recent drought and whatnot, many of the trees out there are actually diseased and dying. So we are looking at a total wholesale replacement, so we are looking at something similar to city hall landscaping, zero scape, water-wise type of landscaping and we are going to be developing some conceptual plan and bring them to parks and rec and subsequently city council for review and comments on that. So that's one item.
Mr. Lynn, I'm deeply concerned about the public safety aspect of diseased trees on El Camino Real. I'm not sure, sure that should be delayed, just even in removal. I don't know that you have to go through the full recycling of the whole thing, but please be quite aware that that's the widest part of El Camino and just as a, as a public safety measure, I'm not sure that we should be delaying that much further, but it's, yeah, you have an arborist in your staff and I hope that you will use him in determining.
I heard you allowing clear and we definitely are doing something. We had removed a few dozen, right, wood trees out along El Camino. We had done a few dozens, what they call deep root fertilizing and we are hoping to see some turnaround, but I am somewhat not too positive about that, so we will get back to you.
Yes, question?
While you guys are at it, can you guys, I noticed that the mediums are getting overgrown with weeds. Could you guys, you know, at least address that, please?
Definitely, I think I have gotten a message from the city managers about something similar to that and we'll be addressing that.
Yes, Ms. Schneider?
The, we currently have, is it four park staff that take care of the maintenance of all of these property areas? Are you asking to stay at the same number of staff or additional staff?
We are asking to keep the same numbers of staff. We have a total of eight staff in parks divisions, including the superintendent arborists and not only median landscaping that we are maintaining, we have about 112 acres of parklands and also the school playing fields that we are maintaining. So there is a lot of job for these eight guys in our little divisions there.
So one of the most frequent complaints from the public is weeds. So how can we keep the public happy and keep the staffing the same? And fix the 1.6 million budget deficit?
Again, I am not a genius. I don't have answer right now. Hopefully I can come back to you and give you some satisfaction, the answer on that. And the other things about weeding is that we are trying to stay with the integrated pest management policy that we have and try to minimize the use of pesticide. So that is somewhat challenging to us, so we need to balance the needs and the health and safeties of our residents.
We just gave the garbage company a big increase, maybe they could give us a lot of free mulch. They're not here, but most city contracts would have a mulch contract.
So we'll, we'll look into that. Weeding seems to be a, a theme tonight with complaints, so I'll look into that.
Goats. Goats are cheap.
Actually, I saw them riding the boat train home one day along the SF PUC property. They have these small goats, maybe a few dozen of them, they were out there grazing.
We might want to invest in some goats.
You can rent them.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, you rent them from a former garbage company.
Moving along, we're getting close to 11.
So the next item on my list is landscape improvements for 100,000 and there will be a re-landscape fire station 38 on Crestview, the Millbrae Museum. You'll notice that we are a little bare out there without any landscaping and also like I mentioned earlier, we have a little patch out front in front of the police bureau that we need to address and that is that 100,000. And then following by the next item, which is parks master plan implementation, I just heard Councilwoman and Schneider mentioned that she is still waiting for park master plan. We are hoping to wrap up the park master plan by the end of June and then at least conduct some sort of study session and get you familiarized with that. So, end of June is my goal. It could, we could potentially run into some minor delay. I don't know how to define that minor delay, but we'll let you know. And we are just putting a quarter million dollar placeholder on next year budget based on the outcome of the parks master plan, things that we have to implement. Again, like Deanna had mentioned before, we're looking at federal state mandates and we're looking at health and safety and wellness of our resident and those are our priority when we are addressing the shortcomings in our parks. And the next item is Millbrae Transit Center to Spur Trail Connection and that is actually going to be about two-thirds of that is funded through a CCA, not CCA, MTCTDA article, three grand, somewhere around 450,000 and it's going to be a two-year project. We are just concluding our sequel process at this point, so we are going to go into final design shortly with the implementation happening in, perhaps in 2020. Continuing on with parks, we have some incomplete project from last year because of either of our staff resources and since, and accommodations of other reason. So we are not going to be purchasing additional Big Valley this upcoming year. And speaking of Big Valley, I would just stop by a resident during the council meeting break. She accidentally dropped her car key and a home key in the Big Valley by the library and this is not unusual at all. When we first installed those Big Valleys at the, in front of the library, we have a lot, a lot of customers actually returning books and audio tips into the Big Valley. So we have to put a sign out there, this is not a book return. And again, and again, ADA transition plan, like I mentioned earlier, that's something that we don't have to do next year, but it's nice that we could continue to address a deficiency in our transition plan. And Spur Trail wood railing is something that we didn't have to do last year, so we ended up might refer, deferring them to a future date unless it is a critical item. And also, we might slow down on our installation on tree grit in public sidewalk. And lastly, we had thought about replacing the playground equipment at Central Park and now on second thought, we think we might just want to defer that pending the outcome of our recreation facilities there. Now we're moving on to topics that we all love, streets. Now we're moving on to topics that we all love, streets. So the same thing next year, we'd like to at least request a funding of half a million dollar for sidewalk, continued sidewalk replacement. We have had several lawsuit complaints, and also I have sent into a couple deposition, and we have paid out quite substantial amount of claim amount because of trip and fall. So we need to address that very aggressively and proactively. And then we did a, we did a, a street presentation perhaps about a year or so ago. We know our PCI pavement condition index is among the lowest in the county, the third lowest, and at 54 points out of 100. So in order to bring our PCIs up by about five points, we need to spend somewhere in the range of four and a half millions or so in the next five years to do so. So in, in the next upcoming fiscal year, we are asking for a $4 million budget for a street repaving, of which about $3 million is going to be coming out from gas tax, Measure A, and come from SB 1, and the hit to general fund would be about $1 million. And then again, we can have another discussions about that. We can maybe perhaps trim that budget slightly to meet our budget goal, to have a balanced budget. And next year, we're going to try to, since we've been talking to you about doing preventative maintenance on our streets such as slurry seal, cape seal, so we are going to do an experimental project next year, a large-scale slurry seal project, which turns about $1 million. So we are going to addressing streets in a fairly good condition by putting a seal cone on top of it by prolonging the useful life of our streets. So in the last fiscal year capital budget, we have a couple items on that, that we are going to be deferring. The first one, which is the Millbrae Avenue Bike Bridge pedestrian overcrossing, and Mayor Pappman had mentioned something about CCA grant, and that's actually due tomorrow, and I have already had the letter of interest to CCA staff this afternoon. In that grant program, we are going to be seeking some funding to help, using a consultant from CCA to help us complete our application for ATP Cycle 4, which is going to be due sometime at the end of June, and we intend to put in a fairly large funding request to the states of California ATP Cycle 4. And then the next thing is, next item is Route 28 undergrounding, which is a PG&E set-aside credit for Millbrae. We have somewhere in the range of $3 million to do, to form an undergrounding district. And due to limited resources that we have staffing-wise and money-wise, and we recommend that we defer that out by another couple years and continue to collect the credit from PG&E.
Ms. Schneider?
I'm sorry, on the Millbrae Avenue Bike Bridge, have we formally sent a letter of request to the move, get us moving people that we'd like consideration of funding from that tax measure to come for that project, or any other projects in Millbrae? We've got a little bit more time for that. I know I.
I, I believe it's still just public comment stage, so anybody can make that request, not necessarily a city. So you, you can request that online.
Well, I've already done it as an individual, but, or as a BPEC member, but what about formally as a city saying that this is a critical project for us to get a bike pedestrian overpass over 101?
I don't see why not. I mean.
One, one thing that I would recommend maybe at a future council meeting, that we'll come back with a resolution, and I think that would carry more weight on the City of Millbrae City Council. So we can have a side discussions about that.
If, you know, I'm sorry, Key, along those lines, all of our transportation projects, and we should have a resolution and throw those into the traffic studies, everything. Just give me a bunch of resolutions, I'll sign them and send them up there. I mean, we should ask for the moon and get that funding in line. I don't know that it'll go anywhere, but might as well ask. It's all right. We'll say we asked. Go ahead.
Shall I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, moving on, we are now going to be talking about storm special project, capital project, and should I change the slide to?
Yeah.
Okay. So unfortunately, because of our aggressive inspection program of our storm drain system, we identified two structural deficiency in our storm system, and they're going to need somewhere in the range of about $1.5 million to replace them. And we are actively putting together a bid document right now. We are hoping to get out the bid sometime in, towards the, more the end of the year with the project being done sometime in 2019. And also, there is an internal transfers of $365,000 to the garage fund to make the garage funds whole. And then with that, I would let Ms. Hillbrand continue.
So I just wanted to just provide a little bit more background, and also considering the hour to see if you wanted to, so we're on to the enterprise funds now, again, primarily in Public Works. In most cases, those enterprise funds are funded, I mean, except for the Storm Drain Fund, they are self-funded. So when we bring you a financial plan, which usually comes along with a rate study, we, we indicate capital needs in that financial plan. So again, except for the Storm Drain Fund, the, the recommendations are, are funded for next year. If you, you know, have had an opportunity to take a look at the, the background documents, you'll see which projects are not funded. The only item identified in the enterprise funds as unfunded is a tank replacement that we're just scheduled to do a debt financing. So until we do a debt financing, it's treated as unfunded. And then, once we go through a debt financing process, we would, we would then consider it funded. So if you wanted, Key, to walk through those projects or considering the hour, if you wanted to save that maybe for next time, I just wanted to, to pause for a moment.
We are reaching the 11 o'clock hour, and.
Yeah, it would seem like a good place to pause.
Yeah, I think it would be a good place to pause. Is anybody else? Okay.
And I did want to encourage, and if, and if we can put these in your box in a larger format, if that's helpful, you to take a look at what we've, so you can see what we funded, what we've unfunded.
Yeah, that would be super helpful, as Ms. Soliva said.
Okay, then we will, we will make that happen. It'll be in your box, and so that we can, again, we'll be back to you in a few weeks with a final recommendation, but it'd probably be helpful for you to have had some time to look at what's in there.
Thanks. Okay, real fast.
Oh, yeah, I just want to thank staff for their work, and also, I also noticed that you also added investment into, you put some items here to invest into our economy. So rather than just the doom and gloom cuts, we're trying to also increase our revenues by investing in, in those sources. Thank you.
Mr. Hollibur.
This might be a very dumb question, but when we get the, the formal budget for, for formal approval, we'll be getting the full spreadsheets and all of the tables and everything like that, that we've.
You'll get the book like you got in September, so it won't be like every line item detailed, because I didn't reconcile back to departments, but yeah, you'll see the whole narrative
and all that, yeah. Okay, all right, great.
And, and the other item, so again, we talked about this a little bit earlier, but our next steps are sustainable financial plan. How do, how do we become sustainable into the future? So again, looking at the long-term projection, that item is already under contract and just pending, pending finalizing this budget, so we can send them the reality for them to evaluate. Again, it's going to be focused on unfunded liabilities, including our pension and post-employment costs. And then shortly behind it, the master fee study, cost allocation plan, development impact fee study, revenue study. So we don't stop here. We'll keep going.
I'm glad to hear that. And staff, everybody who participated in our goal-setting session and nearly set the number one goal, which was this fee setting, because there are projects in the mix that we don't want to lose out on receiving fees and stuff. I think that's going to be a top priority moving forward in the next week or so, so we need to discuss that. But I compliment you, Ms. Hillbrand, and all the collaborations with the department heads and everybody working together. That really amazing, applaud you all for working together to help us through this process. Thank you so much. This was very helpful. Again, compliments to everyone. You did a great job here. And so the reserve policy was when I was mayor, I think 2008 or 2013. You can, we'll, we'll find that for you. I'll help you on that one. But you, you guys did a great job. Thank you so much. Any last minute questions?
Super easy to follow. Thank you very much.
Yes. Okay. Given the hour, does anybody have any dire announcements they need to make? Yes, Ms. Schneider?
Just to the public, the Millbrae CERT program will be participating in the Green Dawn exercise on June 7th. It's a Thursday. Unlike most exercises where you need to be CERT-trained, this one, they're actually looking for other volunteers who can pretend to be the people that are going to be rescued. The event will be taking place at Unipacera Park, which is right at the top of Helen Drive, or if you come in from San Bruno. So if you're interested, if staff is interested, this is a great way to come out and work together collaboratively with CERT. I can say at the, the county level, we're talking about how to get more of the individual CERT programs working more together. So this is an exciting opportunity. You can still sign up.
All right, I think I still need to take a vote here, though. I'm sorry, we have a closed session. No, we don't? We're not going to hold it. Thank you very much. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much.